Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Well, there we go, we're all set.
All right.
Rich, was that you getting trained on how to operate Zoom?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm, this is training.
Well, I can handle the water person, but I'm at the water, but I'm.
Look, I'm already signed in someplace, I bet.
Is there any way you can call back tomorrow? Oh, that would be great, that'd be great. Okay, it is Pinconning Treasure. And that's at yahoo.com. Yeah, treasure. Yep, at yahoo.com. My name is Amy. Okay, thank you so much, yeah, bye bye.
Hey, Amy. Amy. Hi, Rich, how are you? Hi, Terry.
Good.
Hi, Terry, haven't seen you in a long time.
There we go, unmuted. How are you, sir?
Wonderful, good to see ya.
I see you. Well, I don't see you, but nice to hear you.
Amy, now you can see me.
Hi, Marty, how you doing?
Wonderful.
Good.
Happy to be here.
Fantastic, so am I.
Every day's a great day, you can sit at the table and take nourishment, and I do a lot of that.
Hi, Don.
Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. Ain't seen you in ages.
I know, I haven't seen you in a couple of years.
I know it.
At least.
I was just in the store last night. You never there though.
He likes to hear that. I was in an airplane last night.
Oh my goodness.
No, no limit on how many times you can come in.
Oh, no, no, uh-uh.
The world's slowly getting back together. We finally went through our first trade show last weekend.
Wow, amazing. You get another dog yet?
No, we actually had a golden doodle we were getting, and we decided we gotta have another miniature shouser. We're just too hung up on those, so we're having an awful time finding a female. We've been looking for a year. They're few and far between. Ever since COVID, you, you can't find a dog. Everybody wants a house dog now.
Oh, wow, yeah, that's true, that's true. I'll keep you in mind, though.
Yes, if you see one, holler.
I will, I will. Sorry about your slaughtering your name, Mr. Shepherd. I'm used to spelling it like a German shepherd.
Yeah, some dogs are still available. German shepherds.
Those you can buy, those.
Yeah. Bay County Humane Society's, or I think the shelter themselves got a couple, like, Boston Chihuahua mixes or some, or little, little Yorkie Chihuahua mixes, man. Man, they're cute, they're super cute. But you're not a shelter.
Ankle biters.
People don't believe me when I would tell them that when your dogs came, they would try to jump over the top of you to get out of the vehicle, to get up to the kennel. That's one of my best sales pitches. Hurry up and wait.
Yes.
Enjoy your Christmas shows every year. I take everybody I know by the house.
Well, thank you.
Say, I know that guy.
Yeah, look, it's worth doing it for all the little children that like to look at it.
Yeah. And the big ones, too.
That's right.
That, all grade did that really, really neat little, everybody, all the little businesses in the community got together, did a Christmas tree, whatever, that was kind of cool. Made it up there to see that.
We love driving through and looking at, especially if you get a fresh snowfall. Just beautiful.
That's, I think it was like half rain and half snow when we went, but it was still good.
They must had, oh, don't you think there was 100 or 150 trees or at least?
I think so, yeah.
Pretty spectacular.
It really was, they did, they personalized them really well, that, I think there was one that had pickles all over, I don't know if Bayview did it or Mr. Chips, or, or no, it was that.
It was, uh.
Yeah, 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 that's right. Yeah, that was pretty awesome.
I always wondered how the marijuana people here in Pinconning are gonna decorate a tree up there.
Ooh. I got some ideas.
I'll bet you they would, too. Probably wouldn't be on, the ornaments would be there very long, would they?
Probably not, probably not.
I see your Trump sign there, Don. Boy, since Trump got out of office, the Chinese are just putting it to us. Everybody incurred a $3,500 freight increase on containers coming out of China. They're nailing everybody for 10% on cost because the American dollar isn't worth what it was. It's 11 grand now to get a container from Ningpo to Pinconning. And then just, really, you're gonna see inflation later this year, like you can't even imagine. They mothballed a couple of shipping lines to show everything, to slow everything down. And it's just been a mess. So then Home Depot and Walmart are the two largest importers. They went out and bought every empty container they could get their hands on. And of course, then what does the Americans do? The Americans said, hey, if the Chinese can do this, we're gonna raise domestic freight. It is out of control, the increases we're seeing right now, for no reason whatsoever. Just terrible, and nobody seems to care. A truck out of San Diego, we used to pay 5,500 for, is nine grand now. We had one the other day out of Texas, we usually pay 2,400, 2,500, the guy wanted 6,600, told him to keep the load. Don't even want it at that price.
Nope.
It's.
When they start having to sit on their merchandise, they're gonna have, they're gonna have to force it to come down.
Yep, that's right, 'cause it's just extortion now is all it is.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, even, just even over into Wisconsin, Minnesota and that, we've seen four to $600 increases per load, it's just, no reason for, gas hasn't went up that high yet. It's gonna, but it hasn't went yet. Well, we've went, what, 20 some years without inflation, you're gonna have her this year.
Puts the hurt into capitalism.
Yeah, the, the consumer spending dollar will get hurt a bit bad.
Vacations and everything else, you know, people won't go. They can't afford to go. When the gas prices went up there years back, kennel, kennel business went way down, people couldn't afford to go.
Okay, folks, I think everyone is here. Uh, we're gonna call the meeting to order at 5 o'clock. Roll call vote, please, Don.
Yes, Laporte.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Morris.
Here.
Keeney.
Here.
Saha.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tem Betcher.
Here. Um, opening ceremony, the pledge allegiance, the pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, approval of the agenda. I need to add a few things to the consent agenda before we approve it. Um, we're gonna have D, Don, for, um, approving the minutes from February 16th, 2021.
Um, consent agenda, I'm, oh, on number eight, consent agenda. Yep, you're adding, what was it, Sherry?
Approval for, uh, the February 16th minutes.
Anything else?
Yep, number E will be approved, the meeting minutes from our emergency meeting. And that was February 23rd, 2021.
What was the date, 23rd?
23rd, yes.
I, I, yeah, sorry.
And F is the federal labor law notice.
This is all on her consent agenda, Sherry?
Yes. Does any council member have anything to add to the agenda?
I have several additions.
Is it gonna be new business unfinished?
Well, um, we talked about three of them at the last meeting, though, one, one, one will be new, so unfinished business. Uh, interim manager. So if you had that under, uh, item G. Item H, city manager position interview process. Item I would be clerk, clerk position update. And under new business of financial and reporting update. David Wasdoloff firm, our auditing firm, should be in the audience here to give us an update on, uh, reporting requirements that the city has delinquent in and what he's been working on to make all the council aware of what needs to be done.
Hold on a second, Brian, right there, if you could. Under new business in our agenda 11, we missed letter D. So, you might wanna, um, press it, you know, press it down, whatever you gotta do there, and, um.
Well, you want that item D since it's not on there, so we'll use that for item D.
Yeah, just leave it at I, I, item D, that's fine.
And what was it again, Brian, please?
Uh, financial and reporting update. Update, uh, for council from our city auditor.
Thank you.
Will that be all?
Yes, thank you, Sherry.
Yep. Okay, number four, approval of the agenda.
I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will support.
We have a motion and support to approve the agenda, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Laporte.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Keeney.
Yes.
Saha.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Betcher.
Yes. Is there any public comment on the agenda items?
Yes, Sherry, I have a, a, a comment, um, on the, uh, regular reports in, uh, on the agenda. Uh, one of the items is NBA Northern Bay ambulance report. Um, haven't heard anything reported in this for a year or more. Uh, just wonder if council's paying any attention to what's going on. Um, last month, the longtime office manager for Northern Bay Ambulance resigned. And the director, Bob Lysell, has submitted a letter of resignation effective March 31st. Um, he stated there that he could not, uh, I believe his words were, uh, he could not basically work with some of the current members of the board of directors, uh, over there. Um, like I said, we haven't seen any reports or heard anything about NBA in a city council meeting. And I wonder if the council is really aware of what's going on with the citizens' money and their safety. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else on public comment on agenda?
Terry, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Do, now, does it have to be on the agenda, it can be any other kind of comment or question?
Um, for the agenda, but then if you wanna speak, I do believe in public comment.
Okay, all right, so just wait till you announce public comment?
Yeah, and you're entitled, you're entitled to five minutes of uninterrupted time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, correspondence, uh, council, please review the attorney-client privilege in your email. Um, presentation, is there any presentations? Um, eight, approval of the consent agenda.
Sherry, will all these, it's a little bit different than I'm accustomed to, so will all of them be wrapped in one motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Just item, item C, uh, what, what, in detail is that?
Amy, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. On a regular basis, the city has to make water adjustments, whether it is some be calling saying, you know, my meter's broke, um, I have a leak, um, there's just instances where we have to make periodic water adjustments, and, um, usually, I mean, it's five, $10 at the most. Um, usually, every time I make an adjustment, whether it's five cents or $500, I'll, I'll go through the city manager to do that. So I was just clarifying with council, um, to get approval to do that, or if you wanted me to put that on total hold until a city manager comes in. I didn't know what you wanted to do in regards to that, but that is something that happens on a regular basis in the office.
And the billings are quarterly, of course, uh, so the next billing will be, actually outmailed out to our residents would be in, in, in May at this point, or April, I mean.
No, the, this, they're in the process of reading meters right now, the bills will go out the end of March. But we still have to make these adjustments when people, um, have issues. Yes, so it's a year-round process, even though we only do water every quarter.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is that Brian?
Brian, yeah.
And I, and I'll support.
So we have a motion and support to approve the consent agenda, any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Don.
Laporte.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Morris.
Yes.
Keeney.
Yes.
Saha.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Betcher.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on, number nine, committee reports. Does anybody have anything to report on their committees?
Uh, Brian, here, uh, we had our DDA meeting today by Zoom, uh, just to update, uh, per our discussion before the, the board, uh, just like, well-known that, uh, you know, uh, funding, funding for any assistance so we can provide the city for, uh, demolition of those blighted properties we've been discussing. Whenever they come up as far as availability through the county, uh, to take care of these issues in the city, uh, uh, we have reserved some funding there. Some funds there to assist the city in demolition of those properties, so just make it aware of that, and we've been talking about some other things as far as beautifications in the city, so. That's all I have at the, from the meeting today.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else with their committee reports? Moving on, unfinished business. A, we have new hire posting budget. Um, Amy, this is what we were talking about, right, with the allotment for, uh, advertisement?
Um, I believe I had sent an email earlier in the week, or had spoken to several of you in regards to where we are at with that $1,000 budget that we had approved, um, last time. And what we have left, and what are we going to do moving forward? And I just was looking for a decision as to how we were going to move forward. Like, are we gonna approve more money for more advertising, are we just going to stop advertising?
Well, the city manager's position is there for 30 days, at least in the MML. I think you told me that Indeed is a per-click basis for the clerk.
Right, and I kept that out so that we could at least budget.
And we're.
So we have, we have $375 left in our advertising budget. Um, but, you know, that's with Indeed capped out, so we're no longer receiving resumes from Indeed. And that's with the Pinconning Journal in the MML. Um, now, I don't know if you wanted to reach out to Bay City and Saginaw Papers for the city manager position. Or if you wanted to reach out to the Aireneak Independent for the clerk position. But again, I don't have permission to expend that money.
I would, in my opinion, I, I think it should be advertised in the Bay City Times and, and the Saginaw Paper, but that's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I, I think the clerk position, um, city managers, it's more specific, uh, more, have to be more targeted. But, you know, definitely the clerk position should go on local paper. I, I already saw, we, we, we already discussed the Aireneak Paper and, uh, potentially the Bay City Times, they have a placement program, too. So it'd be better just to do that online versus put it on the paper, in the paper, at least, from my opinion.
The, the descriptions that council had approved at the last meeting, um, they are costing $108 to run a week. So we're gonna run out of that budget real quick. So I just need, you know, to know, are we going to go over that, are we not, where, where are we headed?
Well, so what, are you asking for 500 more dollars, or what, what are you asking for, Amy?
I'm asked, I'm asking what you wanna do.
Yeah. I think we, personally, we gotta advertise the positions until they're filled, or only, uh, until we have a candidate to interview process, so. Um, now, my suggestion would be to expend the monies you have, and, and, uh, if we need a lot more at this meeting, and we have a meeting next week also, that we continue to, you know, fund the advertising for those positions.
Well, the money will, the postings have to be in Monday for the local papers. Um, so I would need approval to expend that money at this meeting.
Well, I'll make a motion to expend those monies at this meeting for advertisements next week for, um, either in both positions.
And now support.
We have a motion and to support to expend the, the monies that's left over, um, and let Amy post those positions in the other papers. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please, Don.
Laporte.
Sorry, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go.
I didn't hit my unmute fast enough. Now, we're, we're motioning so that she can finish up what she has, or are we adding to that, where, I'm sorry, if I probably misunderstood, we're doing that by weekly?
Well, I think she's gonna advertise in the Bay City Time and the Saginaw, Amy.
I, that's what I'm unclear on. I have $375 left to advertise. Um, the updated versions of the postings that council approved last time for the clerk will cost $108 a week to run. Um, in the Aireneak Independent and in the Pinconning Journal. Now, I'm sure the Bay City Times and the Saginaw Paper will be a little more than that, so I will go over that $375 budget. I guess my question is, what, what amount are you going to set for me to stay within? Do you want me to stay within the 375 and just use my discretion as to what paper to post in?
Um, you know, I trust you fully, but, you know, council has. Um, you know, I trust you fully, but, you know, council has to approve this as a whole. Um, so I don't have a problem with you spending the money or going over where you get permission uh, at the next meeting, so it, I guess it's up to the rest of council.
I would have to get approval at this meeting because I'll have to have the postings done by Monday.
Yeah, so you need a motion and a support to spend the three hundred and seventy-five dollars and use your discretion if you need to go over. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's what we need a motion for, please.
Well, we have a motion on the table, so we'll.
Yeah, we already have one.
To be stricken, because the motion did not add that she could go over the three seventy-five, so, so that motion would have to be corrected, retracted.
Tracted.
I'll correct the motion, I, I believe I, I made the motion, right, Dawn?
Yes.
Uh, this, add, add that, uh, to, to expend the, the amount already, already budgeted and, and, uh, for Amy to, uh, be allowed to place additional ads as she thinks would be beneficial, um, you know, and expand additional funds. You know, and bring those funds, figures, or another update at our next meeting.
I have the motion, or, or do we still have the standing support?
Yes, I supported.
Okay, so we have a motion and support for Amy to use the monies, what is left, to advertise where she feels fit, and if she goes over, it'll be brought to council next meeting. Um, any discussion?
What, Madam, Madam Merrick?
Yeah.
As I understood the motion, it was approving the expenditure, just that it would be accounted for at next meeting, not approved retroactively, you're approving the spending of the money necessary to go into Bay City Times and Saginaw News today.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right.
Okay.
Yep. Um, yeah, to spend the money, yeah, got it.
Additional funds.
Additional funds, correct.
Sure.
Any more discussion on this? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Laporte?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Keeney?
Yes.
Saha?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Butcher?
Yes. Um, IMB payroll, accounting firm slash temp service. Um, Pat was kind enough to come in today and do payroll, but it is gonna be due, isn't it, two weeks? If we don't have a clerk in, so we were looking at options, well, hopefully we have a clerk in, um, options on a, an accounting firm or a temp service. Does anybody have any input on that?
Um, just a little bit, uh, you know, speaking, this is a discussion we had in the past, uh, about potentially outsourcing s- some of the, the functions of the, of the treasures, meaning the payables, or the, or, or the payroll system, so I don't know how much research has been done and provided as far as getting costs, uh, for this, you know, by management, uh, I haven't, I haven't seen anything, but I know there's been some discussions out there, I, I also did have a discussion with our auditor about it, uh, several months back, um, and there are firms out there that will, will perform this function, you know, in our, in our area, so, but I don't have any idea on cost at this point.
Is that, is that something that counsel would like to look, um, into, I mean, just look in, in case we don't have a clerk two weeks out from now and someone has to do payroll?
I think looking into a temp service might be worth, um, checking out.
Yeah, I, I, I agree that, you know, we have to have something in place for somebody to perform the payroll, for sure, people gotta get paid, obviously, so. I think Amy had sent, uh, which I, I, I knew about too, Yo and Yo, has a function, I think, about City Auburn, um, farms and stuff out too, so they may be a contact, I haven't contacted them at all, but, uh, there are some firms out there, and I believe even our, our current auditor, uh, um, firm could also perform this duty too, but, uh, being the auditor and also performing transactions within the, uh, entity that they're audit, is, is a, a standard which they may not want to do, so if Dave was out there and he wants to comment on that, uh, that, that would be helpful for us.
Yeah, I'd give you a thumbs up on that, Brian, that you're absolutely right, that, um, you know, we don't, we don't wanna audit our own work, so if we're involved in preparing your transactions, which payroll would be part of it, um, in, it impairs our independence as far as your auditor, so that's not a function that we would, we would do as your auditor, we couldn't do it.
But do you have any other recommendations to seek out?
Um, well, word of caution, just on a couple of things relating to that, the, as you know, payroll is time-consuming just to get it out. You had some concerns as far as your reporting in the past that we have tried to clean up. You know, you're overpaid with the state of Michigan, thirty-two thousand dollars, um, prior, that has been refunded. So all the payroll is that cost and those complications. But the other thing to be aware of in your decision-making is that, uh, if you farm it out to ADP or a payroll service, it's still not going to be recorded within your accounting records, so how are you going get that, you know, how are you going to get it implemented within your accounting records? One of the current challenges that you have is that from a compliance standpoint, you wanna charge wages for your street funds, so the guy's, um, time has to be allocated to the appropriate funds, and that's going to be, um, you know, a challenge for a typical payroll service to do. So if you're gonna go in that direction, just be aware of that. Now, somebody like Yo and Yo, that would, that's integrated with your software and could do it through your software and do the posting into your general ledger, may be a better option. A- a- Amy, any thoughts on that? I know that you haven't, um, really done the payroll, but you've, you've experienced the other side of that with the problems of where things get recorded as far as payroll, and I think that's an issue that you should be at least aware of before you make that decision, that somehow it still has to get reported. Certainly is important to pay your people, um, and all the other rules and regulations regarding payroll, it's nice to have a payroll service doing it, uh, for you, but a complication with governmental accounting is that you still have to get the information into your general ledger somehow. And that may slow you down, that may be another, you know, recording issue that's going to put more burden on whoever is going to be responsible for that.
And my comment on that is, I, you know, I'm with Dave, it is, um, probably going to be in our benefit to utilize an accounting firm that can be integrated with BSNA, um, to do payroll. It's a little bit of a nightmare to go back and try to allocate things that other people have done and try to figure out why they did what they did. Um, so, you know, I think that would be a good option.
To, to use Yo and Yo, right?
Well, that's up to you guys.
Well, yeah, to s- seek out a firm with that experience, yeah.
Yep.
And who's gonna be seeking this firm out? Who's, I'm, I mean, we can't expect Amy to do it all.
Well, that brings up a lot of discussions, you know, we really need an interim manager in here, uh, and that's the priority of something like this, whether that's gonna happen tonight or to next week or within two weeks. Uh, yeah, Amy does need help, and this is gonna be all burden on her. In the other, other position, you know, there, do we have expertise to do it, uh, our, our council members are limited to go in and actually work for the city and, uh, uh, to perform it all that way, and, you know, most of us already have a full-time job or two of them, uh, to do this stuff too, so Amy needs help, the city needs help, and, you know, a high priority, which all this may fall into place as quickly as possible to get interim manager in here and, uh, keep recruiting for a full-time one, but, uh, that person may be the same one, may, may, could potentially be the same one. And same with the clerk, uh, there might be some candidates out there that would take, that have some experience in other cities or townships surrounding us that may be able to assist us, uh, to perform payroll in our, our knowledgeable of a BSNA software system that we use, so I think those are the, the things, and try and get temporary help in here, along with seeking out Yo and Yo or a firm like that to, uh, see what they, you know, see what they could do for us also, in, in this, uh, in this period of time where we have, we have the need for this, uh, doing it externally versus internally, so. So I guess I don't know, to answer your question, uh, I personally don't have the time to do it, and I'm already working two full-time jobs, uh, but, uh, you know, do have the connections, uh, I, I, I'm sure Dave would be a resource on that too. But, you know, just making a phone call to Yo and Yo and asking them, somebody that's knowledgeable with the BSNA software, which would be Amy, she's the only, only man standing right now. Uh, you know, to get, get a quote through them or have them, somebody show up, and one of us could be their council member, the mayor pro temp, to just, you know, go over what we have and then provide a quote to us as quickly as possible too.
Yeah, I guess, I guess, I'm, I'm a little confused, I think Lorsy was asking who was gonna make that initial phone call, is that what you were asking, Lorsy?
Yeah, yep.
Could anyone council member make that phone call? So, could I have Lorsy, say if we voted to go this route, could I have Lorsy call Yo and Yo and get a quote?
You could have anyone be a committee of one to do the investigation, they simply would not have the authority to bind the city unless you went out on that thin ice and gave them authority to bind the city for whatever dollar amount it was. So if you just are looking to get bids, uh, it could be, Dave might give you two or three different accounting firms, I don't know if Wylanders capable, I don't know if Yo and Yo, I don't know where, uh, the Reiman Group went, or others, and I don't know if there's any, uh, BSA software in-house payroll people at other township and community. I know most townships now have adopted the BSNA software because it's compatible with municipal finances. So I don't know if there's an individual like Pat who just said, I can't do it anymore, that you could hire in an interim basis for maybe three months. It might be cheaper, but that's a lot of work for one council person to do.
And if I could just add to that, um, we did previously have Joanna from the township helping us, um, when we had payroll, and, um, she was excellent, but again, the townships don't always have like the same allocations that the city does, like with street money, and, you know, breaking all the wastewater down. Um, so, again, that adds time, and I don't know if that's something, you know, you might wanna consider when reaching out to a township official so that they know that there's, um, a little bit of a difference between our city payroll and the allocations versus a township. Obviously, Joanna already knows that, but, um, if you were to reach out anywhere else.
So, what does everyone think, what should we do with this? Chris, you have any ideas?
Um, the only problem is, with my cell service, I wouldn't be much help there, but I could always go down to the library, you know, get online, but other than that, there's really not much I could do.
Lorsy?
I'm, I'm hesitant on making any calls when it comes to this because I'm not well-oiled, so to speak, when it comes to this, you know, the accounting end of it. I just, I don't know.
Well, the, I guess that's, that's the point, um, you know, once again, there's a lot of hats on Amy right now, I don't mean to point directions, but it has to come from an employee of the city and simply design a, a quick email and, and point it at Yo and Yo or those firms to say, hey, if we have interest in interim payroll process here, we have BSNA software, and send it out, it's, um, I don't think it'd be too hard of a process to, to do that, and just put a note out, and we, we would like to receive information back, or if, if you're interested within a week, you know? So, Amy, your comment, I, I know, throwing something else at you, but, uh, they're gonna ask a question that we can't answer either, potentially, how many employees, and there's different aspects of running payroll that those that have run it before are familiar with it, may have to answer the question for them to quote it out properly, so, uh, that's, that's the area where I'm at.
Yeah, my comment on that is, I don't mind reaching out, um, but as my experience has taught me, um, counsel has directed me to do several things, and when I do them and reach back out to counsel, I get no response, or I get very vague response, or I don't get a follow-up. So if I'm going to invest the time into doing the research, I need counsel to follow up with me.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, the follow-up would be giving a quote back, so we can act on it at council level, so. I mean, that's, I guess that, that's the, the result of putting this stuff out.
Brian, if, if you'd like, you know, I, I can do that for you, I can reach out to some firms and, uh, you know, obviously, I don't wanna be responsible for a quote, but, um, maybe the advantage I have is I think I know what your weaknesses are and what you need to fix. Um, no reflection on you, Amy, but the compliance part of payroll, you don't wanna get back in the same mold that you were before by getting the wrong person in there and, you know, overpaying thirty thousand dollars to the wrong people, that's only one part of it, so. You know, I, I, I can reach out to a couple of, uh, firms if you want. And, uh, where, where, or who would you like me to forward it to? I can tell them what you're looking for, and I think I have a pretty good idea of what you need, what your needs are, and then they can do the quote if you want me to do that for free.
That would be great.
Yeah, I agree, I think it should be, well, funneled through emails, just funnel it through Amy, and she can distribute it to us, don't you agree, Amy?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay, I will try and get you, um, some response in the next couple of days, and again, uh, I'll make the contact initially and explain to you, explain to them what I think you're looking for, um, not that you can't do that, but, you know, I think that you have some other issues out there as far as uh, other problems that you need to solve, and one less thing on your plate, and make sure that they're on board with, um, getting everything done that you want done, a- and you're looking at, at this as a temporary solution?
I would say yes, until we got a clerk, wouldn't you agree, Amy?
Um, and it depends on the clerk's experience, you know, if they have BSNA experience, um, we obviously have BSNA, they are just now beginning to come in-house for training, um, they were just strictly remote for good six to eight months, um, so that could be utilized. You know, it, it definitely is hopefully temporary, um, but I just don't know the timeframe, you know?
Just one other comment for you, um, you know, at this time of year, um, accounting firms have an unwritten rule that I can reach out to them, and they, and hopefully they respond to me. Um, so it's not the best time of year to be doing this, but, um, so give me a little patience on trying to get somebody to, to give you a bid on the various services.
Yeah, thank you. Yep, thank you, Dave.
We have two weeks. We have to have someone.
Yes. Um, moving on, number C, it says tribal grant, something Bob mentioned in February. I know it was in there that he was supposed to meet with Mr. Clutcher. I reached out to Mr. Clutcher, yes, last week. And Mr. Clutcher and I met at City Hall with Amy and he got us set up so we can do the two percent grant. What we need from council is a prioritized list from the most important to the least that you would think we could add to this two percent grant. And I see Frank's here. Do you have anything to say, Frank?
Well, I'm sorry, you caught me off guard. Good evening, everyone. I know that there were a couple of projects that were being discussed and Mr. Moffett did not attend any of the roundtable strategy meetings. So we don't have an idea of what you folks are looking for, what you're prioritizing. Is it infrastructure? Is it roads? Is it equipment? Is it safety equipment? And, and I asked Mayor Pro Tem if you folks had done any strategic planning to identify those critical areas. That's why I suggested that she throw it out to you folks to start looking at or prioritizing what's most important to least important to you moving forward in your grant strategy for as, as far as doing applications for two percent grants. Unfortunately, those grants, those requests are due by the thirty-first of March by five o'clock for the spring distribution and then it'll be October thirty-first for the fall distribution. So after the spring distribution, you have a little bit of time to get your ducks in a row as far as what you're looking for, but currently right now, you need to look at those areas that are important to you and put together those requests and get them submitted so they can be reviewed by our leadership. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Oh, no, just, just one, Frank. So, so Mr. Moffett, what was any last conversations with the city of the, from the last round of items that were presented that weren't funded? Is there any record of that out there?
The, the last request that he put in was for a parking area out either by the inner, by the community center or by the park.
Inside, inside the park, but by the food concession.
It wasn't, it wasn't funded. I know that he had this time mentioned something about Josh Clea had a signage campaign for the community center along M thirteen. And I don't know if he's talked to you folks about that, but that's the only thing I had heard mentioned. I also heard mentioned that there is absolutely no video or surveillance coverage of City Hall currently. But I know that that had been discussed, you know, and being a taxpaying citizen of, of, of the city. Have you guys ever considered talking about the roads, the streets?
Yes.
You know, so there are many different things you can do. I'm not here to suggest what you do. I'm just here to tell you that um, the, the clock's not in your favor at this point.
I do believe, Brian, right before Jason resigned, I feel we all submitted what we thought was important. I don't know if that information is still available.
Yeah, yeah, I remember that too. I could reach out to Jason too. I'm sure, I know, I know that was compiled where, where it's at in the city hall, who knows, but.
Right, that's the thing.
Yeah. Well, I think from, from council's aspect, once again, I know we're having per se weekly meetings that are as needed. If, if we can compile a list of things that, and maybe discuss this at next, at the next meeting quickly. And to see how fast we can put something together for this upcoming deadline. There are some folks I, I know that could help out in assisting with this application to, which may include some other things from, from the community need basis, you know, through the chamber and and the friends at the community center too. So I, I, I think from the parking lot aspect, I, I know discussion with the prior, prior mayor and Bob, that was one of the items, is that parking lot over at the, at the park is pretty, pretty beat up. There's a lot of, a lot of hazards there for people to trip, trip over. So I, I know that was one of, one of the projects, but anyway, there's a lot, a lot of different things like Frank said, the road structure in Pin County is very bad. And our last things that we were looking at from a strategic standpoint were, you know, big, big ticket items, we're updating the infrastructure, the water and sewer lines underneath our roads before we start touching roads. So those plans are at City Hall, but once again, we need leader, you know, from the administrative part to target those things for us and and prioritize them and leverage them with the casino grant and along with some other, other grant possibilities that you could fully leverage. You know, improving our infrastructure here in the city. So.
You know, one of the things I wanted to, um, one of the things I wanted to suggest, and we've done this several, with several other communities in the past. If you have a grant opportunity on one, one place or another, two percent dollars can be used to satisfy your portion of this, of the match. And if you're doing something collaboratively, that's always looked at favorably as well.
That's great. I just got some information on a road. Infrastructure grant opportunity through the state is up to two hundred and fifty thousand, but it's fifty percent match. So you know, for roads or infrastructure, big ticket items. So that, that grant is due in by, I believe that either the first of June or end of June. So that may be something for the city to look at and consider to leverage those things. I, I know if you ask the city residents, at least the ones I talked to, you know, a big, big thing with them was making sure, making sure the sewer don't back up in the basement and have them getting rid of the potholes here in town too. So, but you know, that's, that's a great thing to work on and along with getting our financial house in order besides. But yeah, I can, I can reach out to some folks here too. And I just think, yeah, it'd be a good idea. You know, for the next meeting, if we all come, bring your best two, two ideas, or three ideas, whatever you want to submit and we can do brainstorm through this next week and bring some ideas out and we'll try and put them on paper as quickly as possible.
Sounds great.
Yeah, if each council member brought in, like you said, two items, you, you'd have a nice little list going.
Yep, and our, touch base with our engineers too. They were working on several, you know, the infrastructure projects, so they may be able to assist us in this timeframe as quickly as possible to target some things. So.
Okay.
And I can reach out to, to him. He's the one that just sent me the email. I think he copied Amy, Amy, I'm not sure, but there was a whole list of, of, of city contacts that they copied up off this grant opportunity for the infrastructure.
Okay, no, I did not receive that email.
Okay, I'll pass it on to you. But I'll reach out to him and tell him the dilemma we're in. So I'm sure they'll, they'll, S. Engineer usually likes to do that. Of course, they get paid to help us out too. So.
Okay, that's what we'll do. And Frank, I want to thank you so very much for meeting with me yesterday. You took time out of your day to help Amy and I, so I appreciate that.
That's what my function is. I'm more than happy to do it.
Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Frank.
Yep, thank you.
Um, moving on, Terry Spencer, would you like to speak, Terry?
Yes, I would. Thank you. I asked for my information to be put on the agenda and I do realize that the city of Pin County is in pickle, one might say, right now as far as their leadership and what's going on, the day-to-day operations. However, I do have a matter that I do want to make sure that is addressed clearly with the city council. And, and I will say that, you know, in working there for thirteen years, which most of you on this call right now know that I enjoyed that time and I appreciated the friendships that I, that I have and the, the work relationship with most people. But this is my attempt to be civil and address the issue that I have with the city of Pin County in regards to the pay that I'm owed. As far as my, as being employed there as a police officer, my accumulated vacation, sick time and other things. I, when I got hired in there in two thousand and seven, Matt Kramer was there for a long time and when he left, he was paid the money that he was owed. When Chief Tober retired from his full-time employment, he was paid. Some reason I was not. And I've sent the information to the board. They've seen the time that is on their records as far as the amount of pay that I have accumulated, which is, you know, three hundred and some hours of sick time and vacation time and other things that I've sent the email. I don't want anything more than what I'm owed and I will, I expect nothing less. And if you, I did send a copy of the contract, which you all should be very privy to. But there's a couple of things in there that you folks should really be aware of. And if you're writing this down, if you go to Article ten where it talks about pay, I was a command officer, addressed my pay in that section there. Article twelve talks about the holiday, the holiday pay twenty-two-one. Article thirteen talks about the healthcare and what my payout is with that. Article fourteen talks about the sick pay. One thing I will point out to the board that if you notice in the contract, there's a lot of reference to prior to July eleventh of two thousand and eleven. I was hired in two thousand and seven when we had the new contract in two thousand and eleven, they changed some of the things. But when you look at that section twenty-four-one, under sick pay, it clearly indicates that if you're hired in prior to July, or I'm sorry, July twenty-eleven, that you were paid one hundred percent. So that's something that you need to take note of. Article fourteen talks about the personal days. Article fifteen talks about the vacation, which I was, ended the contract, it was a hundred and sixty hours a year. And Article two, or Part twenty-five point four talks about the shit, the city shall keep records. And I know from my contact with the ex-city manager and the ex-clerk that both of them have confirmed with what I believe to be true on the time that I have. And will certainly be willing to, if the council here doesn't, decides not to take the approach they should have take by paying me when that is possible to do so, the other option of, of going the other way, of going to court in this matter, which I absolutely do not want to do, the ex-city manager and ex-clerk will probably be on the notion of what I think of what my time is. So with that being said, like I said in the beginning, I would be open to any questions about it. I don't want one cent more than I deserved and I don't want one cent less. I just want what I was contractually owed. When you figure up that time, it's a considerable amount. And I'm not going to let the issue go away. So I appreciate your time and if anyone had any questions, I would love to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions for Terry?
I guess I do. I, I feel like I recall getting an email saying that this was taken care of, apparently not. So in regards to payment, I don't know, Terry, how much that is. I don't have any information in front of me. Is that something you would require in one hall as a whole, or would you take payment? Or, I mean, we are in a bit of a bind.
I, I would, I would definitely be willing to talk about that, Lorsie. And especially with you, because I appreciate the, the kindness and support that you guys have shown me. There's some that have not, but, but I'm always willing to have that discussion. The information that I have is no different than, I mean, Amy has that information there and I hate to say that because I don't want to point anything else towards her. But I, I know that you are in a position right now with having to have a city manager. I just, you know, I talked to Bob about this when I came back to work back in March. I knew back then that it was, the, the police department essentially was going to be shut down and, and when I can't, and I can't tell you how much of a liar that person was every time that I talked to him. I knew this was going to be an issue. I tried many times to talk about it. He always insisted that I talk to him over the phone. And I told him very frankly that I will not have this conversation with you over the phone because every time I talk to you in person, you lie to me. And that's why I sent him emails. He got an email about it prior to my last day in July fifteenth of two thousand and twenty. He got an email on July sixteenth of two thousand and twenty and followed up by the email that, that I passed on to the council. So it's definitely something that, you know, like I said, I, I'm not looking to get anything more than I deserve, but I had a contract to the city. I'm expecting to get paid what I was contractually obligated to get paid. So to answer your question, yes, I absolutely would work with you.
Okay. And then Richard, do you have anything to say in regards to this? Since you are attorney.
I would, I would ask a question too, because this is like a con, like Terry says, it's a contract, it's a union contract, which our city attorney has negotiated on our behalf of, as far as the city being the employer, Terry's the employee. So I, I would refer this right to, right to our, our city attorney to calculate the reconcile the differences of what was issued, it looks like already. At least the information I have, the check was cut and not cashed, but if those are incorrect at all, it needs to be recalculated based on the union contract and what Terry says he is owed and I have no problem paying, paying a person what they're owed. If it's contract, we're contractually bound by that, then it should be paid. If there is an error calculation, we need to know that. So. But the contract is between the city, you, the city and the, and the, and the union as far as what, what is owed, Terry. So I, I would, I would refer that right to our city attorney to reconcile this and get an answer to us and get everybody paid to what, what, what should be done here, you know, provide the direction there.
I don't believe, Terry, you never did receive a check in the mail, did you?
Uh, that check was not in the mail. I did, when I contacted, before Bob had resigned, I sent an email and he informed me that they had sent me a check. I did get a copy of that from requesting it from the city. I never received that check. And that check that they had, that even states my hours that are banked on the bottom right corner was only a fraction of the amount of the money that they owed me anyway. So I don't know, I don't really know where he came up with them calculations, but no, I did not in fact receive that check. And as the city has informed you all, it never was cashed. So.
Yep. Yeah, I'm all for getting him his pay. If that's earned one, he deserves it.
Answer the questions that were posed with. And first, let me say that I also work for the community that Mr. Spencer is now the supervisor in. So I, I want to disclose that as a potential conflict. I don't work for him directly. But I do want you to all know that if you ask me to review the calculations and go through it, I didn't actually negotiate the contract either. That was one of the first things I did when I. I didn't actually negotiate the contract either. That was one of the first things I did when I became city attorney. It had been negotiated by two managers ago, I think, and it was not passed by council. That caused Bill to resign and then it was just finalized with some new legal laws that were passed by the state. But in any event, I don't have any of the hours, I don't have any of the dollars, I don't have any of that information. And if Mr. Spencer has given it all to Amy, I, I think, you know, either a trip up to city to spend half hour with Amy, or if she sent it to me and I had any questions, if I had your permission, or I could, probably not Dave, because he wants to audit, he doesn't want to do the math on things. But I can try to figure all of that out. I can come back with a recommendation to you. If I have your permission, I'll try to do talk with Mr. Spencer about what, uh, he would take as a recommended, either not discount, but payment over time or a combination of everything to resolve it. Cause I understand your desire to get people paid what they're owed. And, and I think that's where we're at, but I don't have any of the background information other than a copy of the contract. Okay? So, I need to get all of that. I think, Terry, you said you gave it all to Amy? Amy has the same numbers that you have?
Yeah, she actually provided a lot of the, uh, that other information to me, uh, being my last, uh, pay stub that I did receive, uh, from my last day of July fifteenth of two thousand and twenty. And she also sent me a copy of the, uh, check that's still in the mail, um, from, I think it was August, that said, that both of them say the, they actually matched the hours on there that are banked. Uh, so yeah, she has, the city has all that information.
And, and Yvonne and Dawn are the former employees that have the same information. So, I probably would like to reach out and get their confirmation as well, so that there's no stone unturned, so that when I come back with a dollar amount that, it appears to run past Terry, appears to be the right amount, then we can talk about how can we make you hold?
I would, uh, have no issue with that and I would expect, uh, the city to do no less. I mean, they, um, I'm not expecting them to take my word on it. Uh, it's just a matter of record and they have it and, uh, whatever I can do if, if the council wants me and Rich to conversate about it, I have no issue with that. Um, I talk to him all the time and he's pretty friendly to me, so.
That's one person to pick.
Do we need a motion to, uh, have the attorney give him permission to take the reins on this?
I'd make that, I'd make that motion to, uh, have our city attorney negotiate with, with Mr. Spencer. Um, what he is owed, uh, you know, per, per union contract and employment at the city of Pin County.
Now, support.
So, we have a motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Support.
Yeah.
Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Keeney?
Yes.
Saha?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Butcher?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Terry. Um, E, candidate, city manager, mayor, clerk, council position, interviews.
I, I have something to say. Um, when I put E on there, I was hoping for the discussion of what Brian had added as far as G, H, and I.
Okay.
So, I think they all kind of go together. Basically, I would like to know first, um, who's doing the interviews? Did we, we have not picked a committee to do the interviews as we did in the past. I think that's something that needs to be looked at. And then also, where are the resumes? Where do they go? Who's, who's looking at the resumes and filtering them?
Well, the resumes from MML comes to my email and I sent to everybody, uh, the link, anybody can do that. And Amy also has a, a link to re- retrieve those too. So, they get, everybody has the access to that email account of, uh, of, uh, employment at thecityofpin county dot org. I provide that to all the council members. So, you can go right in that link, open it up with the password and see any of the candidates have mailed in anything. To date, there hasn't been one that mailed in other than, um, the one I provided you with, uh, Tracy Byrd. Uh, I did speak with another person as far as the interim manager's position, Mr. Stalker out of Oskota. And he's not really interested in, uh, in, um, coming here at this point. He's got some other things cooking in, in, uh, cooking at this point, so it wasn't a good fit for him right now. But, uh, yeah, and you're correct, in the past, we set up a committee made up of, um, of, you know, citizens from the city and the community, along with, uh, last time, the last round we did, we did the, uh, F and P committee members, uh, to do actual interviews. Like, it's my, in discussion from the last meeting, you know, my thing is just the urgency of getting somebody in here at this point in time. Whether you want to go through that whole process, which could take thirty, forty-five days, sixty days, and we're putting the burden on all of us, plus, plus Amy being, you know, the sole survivor here, you know, to function as a manager and, and the other functions she has. So, my, my point, I guess, is, is if we have a candidate as they come forward, uh, and we're having weekly meetings to have them be interviewed on the spot here with us, just like we do as employers out on the commercial side. Uh, if you have a need, you got to fill it as quickly as possible and not wait for potentially twelve candidates to come forward three months from now and do your interview process. So, um, if you have somebody that's qualified out there, speak to them right away and if it's a good fit, well, hire, hire them or try them on the interim, interim manager or, uh, temporary basis, see how they fit within our community and within our system here. So, that, that's, I guess, the, the point I, I was trying to make to council over the last three meetings. So, if you want to do a committee structures, it's going to take longer, it's going to put a burden on all of us, along with all, all this, all this stuff we have sitting here, uh, doing like reports, uh, grants that need to be put out by the end of the month, uh, you know. Once again, we're, we're, we're not employees of the city either, it's the city council. So, we cannot just walk in the city hall and, and help Amy perform these also. So, she needs help, the city needs help, they need competent help. And, uh, but if you, once again, if you want to do it that way, it's just going to take more time, you know, committee structure.
My, oh, sorry.
What way would council prefer to do it? Whether we do it the committee or just interview them right there?
I'd say on the spot would be the best because, as Brian said, you know, we, we got alarms going off. We need stuff to get done. And, you know, we don't have time to take the thirty, sixty days to get it done. We need to get it done as soon as possible. And like you said, if we got a candidate that's willing to come in right away, we can do the interview at a, at the regular meeting or a special meeting. Either way, anything that'll get us somebody that's qualified quick, the quicker the better.
My concern, I guess, one of my concerns is, is I feel like there aren't many people out there that's willing to step up and do the job, which is terrible to even think and say, but it's true. But we kind of rushed into getting Bob and then I feel like we just quit looking when we were supposed to keep looking, but we didn't. And I take blame in part of that because I'm, was on that committee. I did ask about it once. I should have kept on it. Um, I just don't want to get someone in here and they're here for a half a year and they're like, nope, see ya, and we're doing this again. I know we can't get a guarantee, but it's like, I don't know. I guess there's no easy answer. I don't know.
Um, Lorsie, I, I agree with you. Um, Mr. Moffitt was a quick, and it didn't work out so well for the, our city. Um, I believe, I know we only have the one candidate and I would rather, a- and I know, but this is just my opinion, I would rather have a committee for the interviews to ask those questions that need to be asked.
I know we're pinched for time.
Yeah, but so, so you're saying, but you're saying that, Sherry, so you'd rather waste the time, when we can ask a direct question to a candidate sitting in the audience right now, that you could hear direct from the horse's mouth versus a committee member?
Well, I thought when you would, when you set up a committee for interviews, you reached out to community members to sit on a committee for the interview process?
Yes, along with, along with, and we make a recommendation to council. Still, council has, has the authority to either hire or not, or, or say, we want to interview them directly too. So, uh, still the issue of urgency. Um, you know, you, you may have your differences with, uh, the former, former manager, but he was, he was, he came in to put out some fires, which he did, you know, he, he, he got us in somewhat a little, a little better direction financially. And, uh, whether you agree with it or not, the more you say no, the more people don't like you. And, uh, that's, that's, that's a fact in, in management. Uh, but getting back to this, this issue, you know, we, we got to do something. I, I just, I have no problem with committee structures, it's just going to take time and, and, uh.
Well, I think it should be voted on as a council as a whole. I mean.
Well, I mean, we, we can do that, you know, if, if there's, if there are two candidates out there in the audience right now, we could interview them right now and say, is anybody, just like when we had Andrew, we have a say, the whole, the council never approved Andrew coming in, uh, that was done by the mayor, 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 the mayor just, uh, found Andrew or Andrew found the mayor and brought him in as an interim manager. Was that a good fit? Yeah, it was a good fit temporarily. It could have been a good fit long, long term.
Yeah.
You never, and you, you never know. And same, same with Bob, we renewed his contract. Uh, so I think there was one negative vote or maybe two. Uh, so, most of the council agreed with him, him staying on too. So, it's, it's a matter of opinion where you want to be. If you cut this out, cut that out, you don't like it, well, that's where you're at. But, uh, it's still the point of urgency, you guys, it's, uh, do you want to, you want to be doing this two months from now, trying to make decisions, doing decisions from an operational standpoint? Uh, day-to-day operational stuff where that's not per se our realm to do? We have to have a competent mayor, uh, manager in here as quickly as possible. And if, if we, we had two dozen of them sitting here right now, yeah, I would say the only way to do it, it would be with a committee structure, it would be a five-hour meeting, you know? But if there is somebody out there right now, it, it is temporary to at least come in and have some help and keep doing our full recruitment or going through the whole process of, uh, hiring a full-time person, it could be the same person, it could be something different. But at least we can get some temporary help here at, in, in the interim. Uh, you know, potentially, so.
Okay.
I, I'm not fighting either way about it. There are folks I've reached out to that, in the community, that said they, they would, they would assist. Uh, um, and, and of course, doing, doing with our committee structure, that, that's fine and Danny and I, we can still do that with the same person, if it is the same person. And, uh, you know, I think we have, we have put in thirty days, uh, thirty days to, uh, uh, through the MML to get, you know, potential candidates to send their information in besides. So, you know, keeping that open for the permanent person is still, still a good process.
Yeah, in my opinion, I think an interim would bring in an interim and then continue to look for that manager.
Right, right.
No, yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that because we, we need relief in there now, you know?
Right.
And I'm fine with that as well. I'm saying, that's what we said when we took Bob in and we didn't follow through. And this time, I want to make sure we follow through.
Yes, and the interim, uh, position, uh, they, you know, with everything that's going on, they need to be in that office five days a week. Um, so that's something to think about too, because if they're only there two, three days, you know, interns are supposed to oversee the day-to-day operations of the city. And there's things that Amy can't answer when somebody comes in or calls.
No, and you got to consider too, how long can Amy keep doing what she's doing before she just gives up and walks away?
Exactly.
Think of her, the whole, she's doing this by herself right now, basically.
Yep.
Well, that, that's the point, trying to get somebody in either, you know, interim, working on a full-time person. And if the interim person that comes through can only work X amount of days a week, well, that's what you got to do. Uh, you know, that, that interim was through the MML, like I said, there's people out there that may do it on a full-time basis or a part-time basis, but any hours we can get out of somebody right now is, is key. Uh, whether it be one day a week or two days or three days, and, uh, I'm sure we would all welcome it. At least I would, uh, you know, for, you know, keeping, keeping us per se out of trouble and, uh, uh, you know, assisting, you know, the functioning, functioning of, of the city. We're talking about payroll. Maybe that person's, has payroll experience besides, who knows? But they may have connections with that type of person too, that has experience there too. So, uh, my, my whole point is just urgency to you guys. It's, uh, you know, I've, I've been in management for forty-plus years and I, I know to a point what, what Amy's going through. And, uh, uh, you know, this isn't, uh, new for us either, you know, this happened to us three years ago, when the, pretty much the whole office left. So, it is urgency and that's why we're in the pickle we're in, because the reporting gets lax and, and the people that come in aren't trained properly and they don't know how to reconcile bank statements and things just, just get screwed up. So, we, we need, we need to get somebody in here that knows what the heck they're doing and, uh, as quickly as possible. And, and if that interim person comes in, is it temporary? Well, great, at least they helped us out for a period of time where we could recruit somebody that we are all per se in consensus that we, we think we will like in, in the long term. And it could be the same person, then again, it could be not, so.
Okay. Any more discussion on this?
If I could just add something, I just wanted to make sure, um, that council is aware that we do have a budget to follow in regards to who we hire and for how much.
Yeah, I think we're all aware of that, Amy. Of course, budgets can be, uh, reconciled and moved around too by adjustment. So, um, that's, that's, uh, a performance of the treasurer and, and the city manager to recommend those adjustments to council.
Any more discussion on that? Uh, moving on, F, adding treasury reports to the agenda. Didn't we used to get them, we used to get them in our reports?
I feel like we did.
Yeah, we used to, I, even since I started, I seen it a couple of times and then didn't see it again because I think it got combined with the, uh, the city manager slash clerk, clerk position when they were put together. So, you figured you had one person at the time, you know, you didn't need the treasurer's report, but now you kind of do.
Yeah, I'd like to see the treasurer's report, uh, in our packets every month.
I would as well.
Okay, so we need a motion?
Can I, can I ask a question first? This is Amy. What would you guys like to see in the treasurer's report?
What has they, what have they put in in the past that they always included?
Um, usually, the revenue expenditure report goes in there. Um, I'm hoping each of you have a copy of the budget. If not, I can provide you with that. Um, that's always a good reference. Um, and then maybe journal activity, you know, depending on what you can, you want to see, I can provide you. And, you know, I can change per month, you know, just let me know.
What are your thoughts, Lorsie and the rest of council? Would just want the expenditure report, would that be?
I think the expenditure, excuse me, the expenditure report, um, and I'm really thinking, until we get somebody else in the office, maybe during these week-to-week meetings, um, updates, updates on what's happening, um, what's needed, any concerns that Amy may have, it would be nice for her to be able to put them on paper and present them to us in a report. So, I think adding that in, you know, is essential. So I think adding that in, you know, is essential.
Can, can I make a quick comment regarding your desire of your reports and, and what I have from. My vast history of the city, so one of the things that was presented in the past was your cash balances. Which was fine, um, a lot of times those were what you had in the bank. Problem is what you had in the bank and what you had on your accounting records never agreed, huge problem. So as a council, how do you make a decision when you're three hundred thousand dollars off on? Information that's in your um, accounting records now, so with, with that in mind, you know. Again, council can get whatever they want, my concern right now is that your records are probably still junk.
So at this point, it wouldn't do no good to have them in our packets at this point until things got straightened around.
I think they may be misleading, yeah.
Oh, okay.
The financial portion, I still think Amy should, I would like to see something. I'm sure she has questions and concerns throughout the week, and I'd like her to be able to have a report on that for us to help solve those. Until we get somebody in there. I don't know, is it a terrible idea or not? Amy?
I think it's a fine idea, um, and that's actually. You know, not addressing those issues has actually led us to more problems. So I would be more than willing to bring up any concerns I have, so that they are out on the table for council to discuss.
Yeah, well, like, like Dave said, you know, it's trash in, trash out, that's been, been the issue for. Several years at this point, as far as reporting and getting accurate cash balance for the city. Uh, but you know, your minimum reporting, like your, you know, the revenue expenditure report and the. General ledger activity report, at least you can see what's. What's being expended with the city and where our budget is in the first column and what we have per se expended if, if they're not uh, inputted correctly. But at least you got some, some idea what's going on versus cash balances, since our accounts haven't been reconciled uh, to date. They're not gonna be accurate, um, so, but at least getting that information to council, which is what we. Have always got in the past, and the DDA gets those reports pretty easily with uh, Amy's cooperation too, so. I mean, those can be generated, the question is of how accurate they are, Dave.
So do we have any motion and support for this, just to add that? Um, what Brian was just talking about?
I, I'd make a motion to include those, those two reports, you know, on a monthly basis, and for Amy to point out anything, and, and uh. As, as per treasurer's position, anybody in that position to point out any uh. Explanations that the council may have, or any uh, comments on, on. Those report generated from month to month or period to period, uh, that she may want to point out, that that position maybe have, want to point out. Um, any description, discrepancies or, or concerns.
That motion. Oh, that wasn't a motion?
No, that was a motion, I said that was a long motion, sorry.
Right, and I support Brian's long motion.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Ford.
Yes.
So we have a motion and support, any more discussion on this? Roll call, vote please, John?
Laporte?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Keeney?
Yes.
Saha?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Betcher?
Yes. Moving on. I feel we have already talked about this up in E, the interim manager, is there anything else you needed to add to that, Brian?
Well, once again, we, we do have a candidate out there, said she would be interested in the interim, so I wanted to throw that at council again tonight. Um, you know, to open that up for discussion, if you wanted to test this thing out or not, uh. I think it's still ideal thing to take a look at, we're all here, I believe she is in the audience, if, if we want to have this discussion right now. I think it'd be fantastic to at least have a discussion right now, if you have any questions, that you all have seen in her credentials. And uh, um, you know, to move somewhat forward on if, if there is a potential for. For uh, this person working at, in the interim and how much discussion on the hours, so we don't lose another week on this either. So with that, I, I'd ask, you know, council to allow. Allow uh. Tracy, you know, to have some comments on this, uh, just to see where you're at this point, too, Tracy, you may have reconsidered things too, I, I don't know.
Oh, sorry.
But uh, just having a discussion right now, just, just to see the availability of this person, you know, and if it don't fit for us, it don't fit, but. Uh, at least have a discussion right now, and, and uh, if it comes to. Somewhat of a, of a, a positive thing tonight, well, at least we can move, move it on to in a direction to. Get, get help, so.
Well, I, I've looked over Tracy's um, resume application, and it's very impressive. Um, I feel like she'd probably be great for the job, my concern is, is. I know the last meeting we spoke of maybe one day every other week, and we need more than that at this time.
And I totally agree with that.
Let me, let me request to have, have her answer that question, both questions. Tracy, you out there, there, come into the meeting?
Yes, I'm here. Um, and Lorsie, you're right, you are right, with my full-time job right now, um, that's about all I can commit. Maybe weekends possibly, but um, that really doesn't help Amy with um, someone being in the office with her. Um, I have had an opportunity to look at some things and um, with regards to the reporting and stuff. For the treasure, treasury, state treasury, and um, that's something that I do on a regular basis each year. Um, with posting that stuff to the website and things like that, so um, I could easily help with that kind of stuff. But um, other than, you know, with me having a full-time job right now, um, that would be, that would be tough.
Right, and I totally, I mean, like, your resume is beautiful.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome. I just, that's my only concern is, is that going to be enough? For our city, is that gonna be enough for Amy?
And, and that's my concern too, I mean, Amy, Amy worked fifty hours last week, um, and I don't know. Would, would be able to come in, you know, one day a week, like, Lorsie, i- is that enough? I don't know.
I mean, help is help, don't get me wrong, I appreciate the offer.
Yep.
I just, that's my answer, you know, I don't know. And I don't know if Amy can elaborate on that, if she has anything, she, and I, I know we're gonna have a hard time finding somebody. I just really feel like. I don't know, Amy?
I just wanted to say um, that my main concern um. Mostly is getting a clerk, because the clerk's work affects my work mostly, you know, we interact more so than the manager and myself. Though I do need the manager, um, but really, um. I think sometimes it's overlooked that we have a water and wastewater department, and those guys are running on fumes. Um, their ego reporting requirements have gone through the roof. They have more work to do than they can handle, nobody is in the office, I mean, before. Um, I know that the manager would take care of, um, when Dawn was in office, she would take care of like the ego. Reporting, or at least help with the ego reporting and follow up on certain things that George or Jim needed help with. They no longer have that support, and they're getting behind fast. Um, so that is definitely a concern of mine, um, in regards to the wastewater. That a manager might be beneficial in the office for. Um, again, I don't know those reporting requirements, what they entail, I just know hearing from the guys that they are overwhelmed. And they're not paper people. They're hands-on people, so um, so that would be something that I think a manager could help out with. You know. I agree, you know, your resume does look impressive, Tracy, and I do appreciate any help coming my way. Um, but again, I have the same concern that maybe one day it might not be enough.
I agree. Um, have, have you, or has anyone um, checked with any of the interims on the MML site? Cause there's, there's some on there, I'm just thinking maybe one of them might be able to fill in more than um, um, and I would be able to do so. Um, and then one of the other things, um, although, um, I like being the only candidate for the position. Um, there is another option, um, the International City County Management Association. Um, I don't know if it costs a post on that website, but um, I am a credentialed manager through there, but. Um, that's where I've gone to look for um, job postings.
What was that called again, Tracy, please, internet?
International City County Management Association, ICMA.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I, I can keep reaching out to the, the interim list, also, like I said, I, I can give a call back to uh, Mr. Stocker there too. See if he still would be in the mix, he's, he's uh, close, not necessarily close by, but I, I'll go to our way, same as, same as uh. Same as Tracy, about our way, um, the other people on, on that list, some are out of state, some are downstate, some are in the west end of Michigan, so. Travel, travel here and, and uh, coming in to do things in the interim. Uh, can get a little expensive for the interim list too, because they expect you to pay for the lodging and everything else, so. Uh, besides, besides a, besides a good rate, uh, you gotta pay for the lodging to, to be here for the interim, which can get pretty costly too, so. If that's a fact, uh, I think we should go gangbusters that, starting the interview, whether it be. The only candidate we have right now, do it officially, and uh, get this ball moving, so if everybody thinks. Um, per se, I'm not just picking on you, Tracy, but if you're the only candidate right now, if we had two, I'd say one of the two candidates. Is a good fit, uh, and uh, hire them on an interim basis, or. I guess you wouldn't wanna quit your full-time job unless you have at least a year commitment, as far as expectation of uh, making that move, but. You know, the longer the better, as far as the contract, the two-year would be great, you know, at least get your first year, you gotta get your feet wet, and the second year, hopefully, you're. Your uh, uh, changes in administration, and as far as goals and that, the trend for the city would, would take effect, so. You know, being in the mid-year in our budget right now, uh, you really can't have a lot of uh, input on the direction it goes until you have. The person coming in would have uh, set a new budget for the city, and uh, you know, with, with the consent of council. So, in, in that direction, so you really don't see it affect a new manager for about a year and a half. Uh, so, anyway, with that being said, uh, Tracy, if uh. If the council's not up for you even working one day a week to help out with reporting, we do have another critical report out there. That we're gonna use, lose revenue sharing, uh, next deadline is April first, I believe, uh. So that report has to be done, uh, you know, we're using, losing, I believe, uh, a tenth of our revenue sharing. Every deadline we miss, and uh, that is something that, uh, I think, uh, what you alluded to, you have experience in completing that task. Uh, so if it's something that could be done on one day a week to help get that thing in shape, and maybe help with, with some other things. I'm all for it, guys.
Now, was that, I'm sorry to interrupt, was that one day a week, or was that one day every other week?
It was about, it was every other week, um, and, and if I need to do something on the weekends, I can help you out there too. Um, and I, Brian, just so you know, um, I don't know if you saw this in your email, but I did send you a link to the citizens guide. Which is um, a portion of that reporting for the, for the state of Michigan, which needs to be posted on your website. Um, and if you open that link, but you can forward that on to the rest of the, um, the council as well, but. Um, if you open that link, that will show pin counting on there as you open that, because I went in there and pulled that link for you today.
Okay.
Now, as far as the dashboard, I don't know where they are with that, and my treasurer usually does mine for me, but um. Uh, you know, then you have your, the certification form, which does really nothing, it's just a matter of signing that and getting that back to the state. But you also have to post your, um, your local finances and your unfunded accrued liability, which is your, for your merge. Um, that has to be reported, and those are all things that need to be placed on your website. And a matter of transparency, plus um, getting that information to them. So, if you need help with that, please let me know, and I'd be willing to help um, in any way possible.
So Tracy, if, if we decided to have you come in and help us, what kind of contract would we have to have with you?
Uh, you mean just as a matter of um, helping you, helping out every other week, or that kind of thing?
Right.
I don't know that we would have to have a contract, I'm, I've still got a full-time job at this point, so.
Right.
Yep.
I just, I wouldn't wanna have to pull the plug on you right away if we did find someone to fill the position. I mean, any help is good help, I mean, we need it, so I would appreciate the help. But like, again, my concern is, I don't wanna stop looking.
Yep.
Gee, you would work on a per day, per day basis, basically, which we could negotiate a rate and uh, that would be the way to pursue it.
We could do that. That would be fine.
Well, what's your feeling, folks? Hate to let this opportunity go, uh, you know, once again, yeah, I'm all for getting uh. Somebody here, here on the interim, whether it be one day a week at least, if somebody else comes forward and say I can work five, six days a week in the interim. Well, then, you know, Tracy can concentrate on, or a candidate like her, uh, you know, applying for the full-time position. Which will go through that whole process of uh, interviewing and uh, selection, but uh. What, 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 what's your, what's your fancy here, folks?
I would say. With the state not being very happy with us in the past couple of years at least, especially with things not getting done. You know, saying, hey, we didn't have somebody to do it, isn't gonna cut it, so we need to get somebody. ASAP, so that we can try to get them a little happier, so we don't get any more trouble than we already are.
And, and I'm, I'm fine with taking Tracy on. You know, so long as we keep looking and we don't expect her to stay on. And she's okay when we do find someone that we just pull the plug and, you know.
Well, she, she may be that person too, there's no better way to get, know if that person's the right fit than have her, haven't worked for you, you know.
Right, right.
So, that one prevent her from applying for the full-time position, if that's, that's not what you're saying, correct?
Right, right, no, no. So at this time, I would like to make a motion, um, to take on Tracy. I'm sorry, I don't have your last name in front of me.
Byard. B Y A R D.
Yeah, Tracy Byard is an interim. For our city manager.
Oh, second, Keeney seconds.
Before you vote on that, there's some crucial elements missing.
Okay.
We talked around the bush about what kind of money we're talking, but you really need to authorize. Ten dollars an hour, twenty-five dollars an hour. Two hundred and fifty dollars an eight-hour day. Whatever. And then the commitment of, she can give you one day every other week, Monday through Friday. And she can probably give you every other Saturday, so that she, you get two days. Uh, one day a week, one is working in the office with Amy, and one is working either at home. Or working in the office by herself Saturday or Sunday, and at least the reporting can get done. The revenue sharing could be caught up, uh, some Band-Aid could be put over the bleeding. But we need to know what she wants and what you're willing to pay before you vote. So what do you want, Tracy? Cause that, that may be something they can't afford.
Right, right.
Exactly, exactly. So um, my question to you is, what can you afford? I mean, I'm, I don't want to work for free, but I don't want to put you in a bind either, and I want to be able to help. So the question is, uh.
Budget, but everything I know is. That they're in a little bit of a world of hurt. It, it might be. Some financial rewards, some psychic gratification and reward. Someplace in heaven, if you believe in that, and it might also be something to put in your resume. That, you know, you helped out a city in dire need in their worst time. Um, but I, I don't know. And I'll just throw it out to council. Can they afford twenty-five bucks, thirty bucks, forty bucks an hour?
See, I don't know. I mean, that would, that's a Dave, you know, question. What do you think?
I can say where our budget is, uh, I think we're at thirty-one, twenty-five an hour for uh, for our city manager's current budget position.
We actually, I have the, the expenditure, which is a rough estimate. We actually have about fifteen thousand left in the city manager's salary um, for the rest of the year. But we also have hospitalization, which Tracy would not be taking on, I'm guessing. Um, so that leaves us a little wiggle room also.
When you say the rest of the year, when's your fiscal year end?
June, June thirtieth.
Yeah, so we got four more months, three more months. Well, I was just going by the rate of pay, what uh, what was budgeted for, so it's right around that thirty dollars an hour, what was budgeted for, for the city manager. So Tracy, would that, where, where are you at with things? Would, would you be considered twenty-five dollars an hour? From a temporary basis, or where, where are you at?
Yes, I would consider that.
Okay.
Can you give them a day a week? One day Monday through Friday and one day on a weekend?
Uh. I don't know that I'd be able to do, I mean, Monday through Fri- every, every Saturday I could probably do for a little while, but um. It'd have to be every other week, because I'm, I'm gonna end up having to take my own time to, my own vacation time or something for, make up for that. But I will tell you.
Go ahead.
What's that?
All I'm trying to do is.
I was gonna say. Yep, so um, I was going to say I can at least um. Have a day next week and be in there and try and knock a lot of this stuff out for the state. And get that posted on your website, um, because it doesn't usually take me very long to get it around, but. That is if all of the reports are, if I can pull the reports. I do know one list, uh, the debt service report will need, but um, some of the other stuff can be pulled right from BSNA.
How, how about we try this? We just do not a contract with a signed memorandum. That says uh, you would be committing to eight hours a week on average. At twenty-five dollars per hour, anytime over eight hours per week needs to be approved by council. And you give council weekly updates, your memos, or attend these meetings, for which you get paid. To give a quick interim manager report, knowing that you could be let go without any notice. If they get a new manager in. Is that fair?
Okay, that's fair.
Now, if anybody. That votes wants to see if that dog, or. What is it, that dog don't hunt, hunt, or that horse don't race, or whatever. See if that works. Then we can do a quick memo that way.
So I take back my previous motion, and I will make a motion that we will. Do what Richard said. I can't remember everything he said.
If eight hours a week, twenty-five dollars an hour, no benefits, no vacation. Um, any, anytime over eight hours a week, needs to be approved in advance by council. And there's no notice requirement for her to quit, or for us to replace her with a full-time or a more. Not permanent, but a more hour-available interim manager or a full-time manager as you can get there. But at least you get eight hours a week, your Saturday, Sunday, four hours, or some night, whatever. She could do to do the reporting.
And that's my motion.
Uh, I had, I had a support with um, Chris Keeney. Does that support stand? Yes, the support still stands. Thank you.
So we have a motion and support. Any more council discussion on this?
I, actually, Sherry, um, can I just clarify? That went, we kind of went backwards to letter E under, under interviews. Under unfinished business, I, I, I kind of. We, we were about to go on to new business. Am I cor- correct with that? But, but we stayed back with.
We're at G at interim manager.
Number ten, sub G is a girl.
Do I, well, I don't have that for some reason.
Oh, that was added, G was added by.
That was added by Brian.
That was added by Brian.
G, H, and I.
Yep, G was interim manager, uh, H was.
Oh, my goodness, you guys, I'm so sorry I had a third page. I got it right here. I apologize.
That's okay.
Roll call. Uh, Laporte?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Keeney?
Yes.
Saha?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tom Betcher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, where are we? Letter H, city manager interview.
Okay, what, what does the council desire to do? Wait for a couple more, wait till we get a pool of potential candidates or interview. Persons as they come along, so we can make a decision.
I think interview as they come along, but. I mean, who's doing the interview? Who's making that decision?
I think if we have, you know, Tracy here to at least give us our week, uh, um, take a little bit of pressure off, not a lot, but a little bit. Which is very grateful. That uh, maybe we go to that structure we used in the past, the F and P uh, committee. And ask a couple, several community members who would volunteer to sit on that like we did in the past. Is it, that's the ideal way to do it at, at least, but uh, it's not timeless, but it's that, you know, probably a, a good way to do it at this point.
So how many members are there usually in MMLs with the F and P?
Uh, well, the F and P committee.
Yes.
I believe still is.
Yep.
Not sure, uh, I'm looking out, trying to find my committee structure. Do anybody else have a handy?
No, I, you are correct, Brian.
Okay.
I didn't hear what he said. He was kind of muffled.
Well, I was, I was turning around, trying to look at the, my stuff, but uh, Chris, Chris is uh, also on that committee.
Right.
And then uh.
So do you pick them personally, or could each council person pick a person?
Well, more, more the merrier to sit out of this. It's just a matter of getting everybody together. Of course, we have to do this on a Zoom basis too, so.
Because I'm only, I'm only asking because uh. I know you were in kind of, someone reached out to me today and I pointed her in your direction, and she would be very interested in sitting in on that process.
Yeah, I, I can tell you who I talked to who's been on there in the past, so Carol, Carol Maida, uh. I talked to her, I think she's in the audience, and she can confirm if she'd like to be on that. She's been very helpful in the past, very knowledgeable with uh. Civil questions and uh, um, and that, so she's been. Nope, sorry.
I would like, actually like to see Jean Saxon sit too.
Yeah, yeah, I've talked to her today, Sherry, that, that's fine. She's be fantastic too.
She reached out to me last week, so I had her contact you today.
Yep, yep. I was gonna mention her as the second one, and uh, in the past, Mike Duranzik was on there too. You know, very knowledgeable from the county, the structures, and I'm not sure if he'll do it at this point, since he's kind of trending down from all this stuff. But uh, if anybody knows anybody else, you know, that, that's fine too. Craig was in on the last one, of course, he sat in the audience versus beyond. Up at the table asking questions too, but uh, anybody's, I, I think anybody would be welcome to participate. In the Zoom meeting, you'll be able to ask questions anyway, you know.
Um, does anybody else on council have any recommendations to sit um, on the interview process? So you, you would reach out to these individuals, correct, Brian?
Yeah, I would, I would confirm them all, um, and then try and set up a, a Zoom meeting as quickly as possible, at least for. The candidate we do have, um, and as they come in and do it that way, if we want to wait a little bit, I, I'm still, I'm still. In the position of urgency to who are we got to interview right away, it may be a good fit, but at least if we know this isn't the person. But uh, you move on to somebody else if, if the applicants come in, which I hope they will. More than one applicant, that is, uh, but uh, you never know, no, it's, it is a pretty tight. Pretty tight market for, for employment right now, and uh, I don't know what's gonna happen. You can't say it, but if you do have a qualified candidate. Formally interview them and throw it back to council, see what they want to do, because uh, I, I know discussions with Tracy or anybody I talk to. As, as a uh, accommodation for their current employers, that they like to get proper notes, which is usually thirty days plus, so. Realistically, if you go through the interview process, a couple of weeks out, and goes to council the following week. That's another three weeks plus a month, you know, for, for a full-time, per se, two-year position, offered position, you know. We might be two months out from hiring that type of person, so. We're actually coming in, coming in uh, for the first day of work, put it that way. So if you want to do it that way, that's, 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 that's fine. If everybody agrees, that's fine. I'll, I'll, I'll work on that, that process. And uh, get things set up, so we can at least interview. Frankly, Tracy's the only one out there, if you want to set that up and see what the community thinks and the committee thinks. Uh, in the, in the meantime, we'll have, have a, a day a week to test her out besides, and Amy to test her out. And staff around the office to test her out, and the council to test her out, so.
And, and then if any other applicants come forward, because I'm, Amy's gonna put it in, uh, with the Bay City Times, Saginaw News. Any other candidates come forward, we'd interview.
Yep, yep. You may have to screen a few, because uh.
Oh, yeah.
As Amy, Amy said, you know, with the Indeed stuff, there's, maybe you get a hundred in, you get, you get three good candidates, so. Just not to say everyone that will come in, you want to interview, but um, at least we can bring it to those meetings and say, hey, what'd you think about this? And set up, potentially for the next meeting, interview meeting, you don't make a decision that bring this person in, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd be fine with having the interview process like, like that with the, the community coming in. And then the three uh, F and P, um, and usually, I, I think they do it as a courtesy that the mayor sits in.
Yep. Well, you can't get into a quorum for a meeting, but the, the four would be a quorum for a meeting. I mean, you could come and sit in the audience, but uh. Am I correct at that?
Even, even sitting in the audience is a little dicey.
Yep.
They're official city meetings. And they're just open to the public, but. You, you probably, just as a suggestion, want to form your committee and get council approval next week. Cause we have a meeting every other week, and then get on the ground and start running.
Now, we have a meeting next, what is it, March eighth?
I believe it's Monday.
Yep.
Get the approval for those on the committee you're referring to?
Yeah, just because you're, you're being tasked with getting citizens volunteered.
Okay.
You know, put it on the agenda to get council buy-in for this committee to do the preliminary manager search.
Okay. Laura, so you got, you got that note if you're doing the agenda?
Yeah, it was not easy, I'll tell you.
Oh, I know, I know.
So we're all clear on that, right? Do we need to make a motion for any of this?
Not necessary, Brian remembers what he's doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I got this one, and had a, I've been there three times already, so.
Okay, then moving on, I is the clerk position. Um, where are we at on that? That too needs to be filled.
Well, Amy sent uh, screened out three candidates. I, I don't know if you sent that to everybody, Amy, or just, just the.
Yes, and I meant to have that in the packet, and I forgot to mention it to her to make sure they were in there, sorry.
I did have candidates that I emailed to everybody. There was a total, I believe, of five, five different resumes that were emailed out. And if, if you are looking um, at the resume, there is one, the resumes, there is one in there. Um, that has ten years of city clerk experience for the city of Standish. So that would definitely be somebody that might be able to come in and get a grasp on things fairly quickly.
I guess, what, what, what's your thoughts of, uh, we'll bring those? If you can, uh, did everybody get those, Amy, or just?
No, everybody got them.
Okay. Uh, you know, if you want to bring that to our, our committee structure too, to actually look at that at the same time too. It'd be a lot of interviewing one night, but uh, well, at least five, plus, plus a city manager's candidate, but we could. Uh, also do that if, if you desire to be done that way. What's your thoughts?
My thoughts are get her done.
Hey, Brian?
Yes.
Why are you getting eight hours a week out of Tracy? Why not have her sit on the clerk interview for that period of time? Since she's got the management experience in the government, so she could give you input on your clerk. And then do your managers after that.
Okay. That'd be all right, Tracy.
That'd be all right.
Yeah, I, I agree on that one too, because. Yeah, I, I agree on that one too, because, you know, the office, from the office standpoint, they're working with your coworkers, you, subordinate or managers, you gotta have a good team, so that, that input would be probably very good. So, okay, well, I'll try and coordinate all that at the same time, and if not, we'll have to have a secondary fast, fast Zoom meetings for just the clerks, just to see how the time, time flies with it, so.
Oh, one, one other thing, Brian, just when you keep talking Zoom, DHHS changed their protocol today. Effective March fifth, you can have twenty-five people at in live meetings.
Okay.
We're getting close to normal.
Will I add something to that?
Go ahead.
I don't know if, Rich, you can, you can tell me if this doesn't work for city government, but I know in county government, if you, you can continue to have the Zoom meetings, but there has to be a state of emergency declared within your county. So we can continue to have those if our local emergency manager does that state of emergency, so I don't know if that pertains to city as well.
It's all in the open meetings act, they amended the open meetings act effective December twenty-second last year, and they put all of the Zoom meetings in through the end of this year, and then after this year, it's only military that can attend remotely and virtually. But yeah, we're supposed to tell why we're doing a Zoom meeting and where we're all at, so that the public knows we're not just down at Disney World or off plane someplace. But DHHS saying twenty-five, as hot as the topic is going on right now, I'm not sure I would want to try an in-person meeting and end up turning people away, because that, that never goes over, so Zoom probably through the end of the month, because we can get a ton more people in listening to this, this type of discussion.
I would agree on that till, till the end of the month or the twenty-sixth or twenty-eighth one, they were supposed to change it anyway.
Any more discussion than I? If not, we're moving on to new business, woo-hoo, I hit the second page. A new business, A, meeting minutes and city billing. Amy, could you elaborate on, on that, please?
I'm not really sure, I think the meeting minutes were in guard, in regards to making sure, you know, holding somebody responsible for securing somebody to take meeting minutes, seeing if Dawn was available or not, city billing, I don't know what that's in regards to, do you remember, Lorsie?
It was on the list. Who, who's taking care of the city billings? Well, let's skip it.
So, so basically, for the meeting minutes, do we just have to motion to have Dawn if she'd be willing to take minutes until we get someone in there to take minutes?
Well, you gotta ask Dawn if she wants to continue on.
Hey Dawn, you want to take minutes?
Well, when Rich was talking to Tracy about it being a moral issue and I could use it on my resume and he kind of pulled at my heartstrings, tax season is over for me. I really wish we could, I could get somebody in to train to do it, so I, I, you know, I, I really want that, but I'm not at liberty to leave you standing with nobody either, I just you know, I, I certainly am able to do it, you guys have been gracious, I, I've done the best that I can, so far it seems to be working. You know, I can, I can, I can do it.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you so much.
Do we need a motion and support or is this, we all agree that she, she'll be doing our minutes until a clerk is in that can do this?
I think you can't bind her without a contract, so you can just agree to that, but she should know that a clerk is top priority for the next week or two.
Okay. Are we all good with that, Dawn?
Thank you, yes.
Okay, Dawn will be taking our minutes. B, overtime approval for treasurer, this is a big one, I think Amy deserves every overtime penny that she can get.
Well, she's definitely been putting in the hours and I don't know if our budget allows.
You gotta do, gotta do what you gotta do right now.
I was just gonna say, we're kind of at, you know, we have to, so hours is important, I think.
If we gotta move around, reconcile our, adjust our budget to accommodate this, is what we gotta do, so.
Sounds good, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve overtime hours for Amy as needed.
So we have a motion and support to approve overtime hours for Amy as needed, a roll call vote, or any more discussion?
Just one point, and do you want to put a cap on there without, you know, if she works eighty hours a week's not good for a person anyway, but there might be opportunity to do that, do you want to put some type of cap without further council approval?
I don't know, I mean, I know this week she had worked, this past week she had worked what, fifty, Amy?
I think it was forty-seven.
So let's put a fifty hour a week cap on that.
My question is, is how much has she done at home that we don't know about that she's just doing out of the goodness of her heart?
I, I don't know, that's something you can't you, you can't quantify that, I, I think we all do that too, so, and you know, if you want to put that on your time card that you did work on something at home, you can honestly do it, I have no problem with that, but you know, being an employer, I like people punching the clock, knowing they're in the office working on stuff versus speculating that they're doing it too. So this is, this is a good point of being prudent as spending tax dollars for the city and county.
Amy, are you okay with that fifty hour cap?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna guarantee I'm putting in fifty, but
That's not to say you gotta put in fifty, but we're authorized enough to fifty.
If needed.
So, did you make a mo, did Lorsie make a motion on this already? And somebody supported, so roll call vote, please. Lepore?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Keeny?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Butcher? Yes. C, water meter grants.
Does you want me to go ahead and speak on it, Sheri?
Yes, could you please, Amy?
Okay. Last year sometime, I don't have the exact exact date, council had approved a grant through the state for distressed cities, villages and townships for the replacement of our water meters in the system that they would run on. When the agreement was signed, and you guys have a copy of this in your packets, there was a budget sheet, the grant was for seventy, about seventy-three thousand dollars. The amount that we were, that was the amount that the state was to award or agreed to. The amount that we were to contribute is two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand. My question to council, first of all, is do any of you, I don't know if Brian, you've been involved in any talks in regards to this grant project? Or if anybody has been in touch with anybody that has worked on this grant?
I think this goes back a ways, but I think our engineers were and our engineer, engineering firm, I forget, I'm sorry, I forget his first name, but Gary, Gary, they're instrumental in getting this grant for us, so I guess they would be the contact.
They are, they helped us get this grant, but they are not involved in the actual grant. So we are, the city is responsible to submit certain reporting to the state in regards to this grant, and also to submit reimbursement requests, provide documentation of expenditures, et cetera. When, a couple of months before Mr. Moffett left, he, and I don't fully understand what happened, but he had ordered about thirty thousand dollars worth of water meters. And we, in talking to the grant department in the treasury, they had never received any requests for reimbursement or any of the reporting requirements. So I reached out to Michigan Pipe and Valve, who we received the meters through, asked them if we could return them, or you know, what our, what our options were, so that I could present them to council. He did not seem fond of returning them, I don't know if that was a actual no. He recommended we hang on to them, but of course, you know, they're making money off of us. But we need to do something with this grant, I don't know moving forward, if you want to, you know, have, maybe Tracy can help out with it, catch up on whatever needs to be submitted to comply with this grant. And in regards to that thirty thousand dollar purchase, you know, that's, the city's out that money if we don't comply with the grant. And then another aspect of this grant is that where are we getting that two-hundred and something thousand, almost three-hundred thousand dollars to comply with the grant by two thousand twenty-four? I mean, this is all new to me, I didn't, you know, I knew the grant got passed, I wasn't involved in it, so I hadn't heard, you know, between the turnover in the administration, I guess I just thought it was kaput until I realized that there was thirty thousand dollars worth of meters in our garage. So I don't know what council wants to do with this, but, I mean, if you do want to move forward, I think this would definitely be something to maybe pass Tracy's way. But again, that's your decision, not mine.
I, I think, you know, if Tracy can do this, but a quick call, I don't know if anybody else knows anything about it, but quick call to the engineers to maybe, knowing this position we're in, help us through this process, because I'm sure they prepared these figures for us to submit in the grant application, so they're probably pretty knowledgeable how these figures were come up with and what we have to do to document the training, the software training, what installation, so on and so forth, engineering, engineers part of their fee. So somebody's getting paid off of this administration. I'd probably wager you the engineering fee out of this grant was part of the engineering firm fee to put it together, but I could be wrong, but that's usually where they, they, how they make their money getting, getting grants for municipalities and townships. But that would probably be the first call I'd make, you know, contacting them and seeing what, how they could aid us in this process right now. See where we're at with it, see if they can come up with some answers for us.
I guess what I'm saying is that I don't have time to do this, and so I don't know what you want to do. I mean, I don't mean to be harsh in putting it that way, but it's a mess and I don't have time to do it.
Well, hopefully that's something our intern can help us with then.
Absolutely.
I'll, I'll take a look at it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more on that, Amy?
No, I think that's it. I do just want to note that it is a good grant, we need this grant. Our water meters are old. They're, you know, they're inaccurate and to the favor of the customer, not to the favor of the city. Because they're so old. And with this grant, you could get the software to utilize for our guys to not have to go house to house and take up two weeks reading meters. You know, so this grant is very important, in my opinion, would be very helpful to the city long-term. So it's definitely something I feel that shouldn't be let go. But again, that's your guys' decision.
One of the things that came up earlier tonight was the tribal grant, so that's kind of all goes hand in hand for, for Tracy to get dumped on with everything tonight, but not only the treasury reporting that I was gonna talk about, but if that grant could be sought from the tribal contribution for some of it, because if you turn a state grant back, they tend to frown upon you for several years.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's a great idea, Rich, you know, we could leverage the grant with the grant, which Frank said we could do, so.
That definitely would be a priority on the grant list. Anything else, Amy?
Um, nope, I think that's it.
Thank you. Oh no, we gotta go down to D, to the auditor.
Yeah, I asked, my request was more on the financial reporting, which we discussed earlier. Financial reporting updates, and I, I invited Dave, Dave to be here, hopefully he's still here, it's been a long meeting, Dave, and I know your, your time is money right now too, being in the tax season. But having the city auditor provide an update on reporting requirements in that, I guess I was told that we're in process, and if he's aware what, what he's been working on on behalf of the city and any delinquent reporting that he is aware of, which needs to be worked on, you know, so all the council members are aware of exactly where we're at of any known reporting delinquencies through the state, so knowing that Dave's been working on at least one item, maybe he's aware of other things, and I just wanted him to pinpoint out or discuss that with the council as a whole, make everybody aware exactly as far as he knows where we're at with things that would jeopardize, you know, funding for the city and, and also of course our, our fiscal solvency of the city, so. With that, David's there, I hope you're still there to turn it over to you.
Sure, I'm still here, so, so let me, let me start out, and Amy, you can chirp in whenever you want here, some of the problems I think is just some direction on where the city needs to go, who's going to be responsible for what, and you know, listening to what's going on in the meeting, I think you guys are Listening to what's going on in the meeting, I think you guys are spot on. So before I start, Tracy, don't get a. Don't get scared off on some of my comments here. So they need help, and who's going to help them? I don't know. Part of my goal in the past has been to try and teach your staff. Certainly Amy can call me whenever she wants. I've been trying to help her. But you know, she's got a lot on her plate, and who's responsible for everything, I guess should fall on council at least to know this, so. I just jot down a couple of things that I think you guys should be aware of, and some of them you've already touched on, so. In, in my, I'm biased here, so in my order of importance, a couple of things that you should be aware of. And the timing was perfect today, Brian. You got the email that came through. Just, just so you know, that email came to you because there's been some difficulty in communicating with whoever. At the city. So I had given them your contact information on numerous contacts with the state. So, so all of council knows what I'm talking about. We've had, Bob and I have had discussions with the state as far as. Problems that you've had as far as your financial reporting and deficiencies noted in your audit report. On one of the last meetings that we had, unfortunately Bob wasn't there, and I got scolded over being too involved. As the auditor taking care of the city's problems, but they did appreciate the fact that. At least they think you're headed in the right direction. So you got a letter, Amy, this came today, correct? This is the first time you saw the letter?
Correct.
So I'm, I've been kind of waiting for this to hit. It's a letter from the state that they want to know, you know, how and. When you're going to fix some of your problems. And this, I think, is, at least for me, priority one over some of the lost revenue that you're going to get because the state. You know, you've had two years of similar problems and it needs to be fixed, so you know, they're looking for your bank recs to be cleaned up. And brought up to date, at least through December. As of right now, you're through August. I claim there the balance is up as of June, so you got two months in. And I think it's fair for the state to anticipate that you'd have December done, and it's not. And so Brian, your call on that, I think you might need a little coaching, you know, I'll, I'll be happy to be on the call with you, but. You know, they want a response from you as far as what you're going to do with solving some of the issues. The bank recs is one, your budget. One of the problems with your budget, as Amy has told me, is that if you've made amendments, the amendments are not included in your software. So that's not going to do you any good. If you're, if you're over budgeted, you know, that's not, hasn't been recorded, so you have an issue there. And then the funding of the reserves that you're deficient on, those three items they want addressed and want to know the progress of where you're at. The, the, you know, Mr. Doom and Gloom here. If they don't get a satisfactory answer, you know, the state's going to come in and they'll, they'll manage the city. I think that's how drastic it is. So you gotta show them some progress on, these are.
You muted yourself.
So your, your auto report has lots more deficiencies, but these are the critical ones that the state wants a response for. So there's a doom and gloom on that. Item number two, which you already kind of addressed, was your, the old EBIT. Your money that you get from the state on that filing that has to be done, the dashboard. So you've lost some of that money already because it hasn't been done. Again. I told, just recently, we decided, our firm decided that we would go ahead and do this for you. We had a due date or a task date assigned to it by March twenty-third. Tracy, if you're going to take that off our plate, you can have at it. Just some, some items of interest for you. The F sixty-five was completed, so you know, that populates a lot of the information. We sent that in. Little bit different for a city versus a county, but if you're familiar with it. You know, you need to get it out because you'll take another hit April first if you don't have it. And just so council knows, if you don't have these reports done, you lose some of your revenue that. The state is sending to you. So you've lost. You've missed two dates. Each date that you miss, they take one-sixth of it away. So you've lost one-third of your revenue from this special reporting that you have due. Another item that just came up today, and I forwarded that to Brian and Amy. Is that your street report on a separate login is not complete. That needs to be done. Otherwise, the state is going to hold your street reporting due. April fifteenth. Again, pretty simple, that has to be done, and I had sent Bob and Amy some. Information on this, on how to complete that final task on the street report. So we did all the numbers and submitted that. The last part is the condition of your roads and what your streets are going to be. It's pretty simple. Amy, do you think you can accomplish that last item there?
I could probably accomplish that with a little work.
Okay, so the, the asset management part of it, you know, if you don't have any major projects, you just simply tell them no. There's contacts on there. The contact people are really easy to work with. The good news is you have most of the street report in that we did and submitted. It's a separate login for that. And I guess I'm a little surprised because I thought that this was already done and that, you know, you. I don't know if you attended the class on it, but I know that Bob had talked about it and that he had taken a seminar on it.
I had attended the class. I'm not sure if he did. He was taking it at a different time than I was. I did go over it with him when I took it and. Told him that the area, of the areas that I, I was unfamiliar with and asked him, you know, if he could. Involve me, you know, so I could learn. From there out, I just heard that it was taken care of, so.
Me, me too. So that's why I was surprised that it's not done, but so your straight state, street dollars will be withheld if you don't get that in.
Okay, so I will get with you with any questions I have, if that's okay.
Sure. Item number four, you guys already addressed, but it was on my list, so I might as well just address it again, your grant. So yes, I knew that the, the two percent money is something that you should have pursued and where you're at with that. A bigger concern is the grant that Amy brought up. You know, again, I don't know a lot about it because it, there wasn't a lot of information to find. I can tell you this about your grant recording and the information that you have. Tracy, close your ears here, but you know, like your Saw grant, had it not been for Gary Barto. We never would have gotten any of your information. He kept meticulous records for all of your expenditures. The reimbursement request and other things. So word of caution that, I think your grants are going to take a little bit because we couldn't find a lot of the detailed information that's out there. From a fiduciary standpoint, you know, the little bit that I know of your grant. Yeah, it's, it's nice that you can upgrade your infrastructure, but the city's in a bit of a crisis. And are you sure you want to go through with it? So that's your decision, but I, I had it on my list, so I thought I'd bring it up. Just be aware that your grants all, all require some special recording that has to be done, and. I think Amy got, has it now, and I think that she has it set up, but somebody has to provide her with some, some more detail. And the last item, again, addressed by you guys already tonight, is your payroll issues and how you're going to deal with that and getting that cleaned up. So, as I said, I will try and reach out, but you need to get somebody in to get that, that ball rolling. Again, that'd probably be a clerk's function, but you don't have a whole lot of time to get things dealt, resolved. And of course, you have to pay your people. So I'll give you whatever time I can on that to at least get the contact out there for you. But I think those are your five major items that you have, that council has to be aware of. And you have some real problems out there, which I'm not telling you anything new. Did I miss anything, Brian? Anything that you want to add?
No, I think you hit the nail on head as you, as you have done in the past with every audit besides, so. Anyway, I, I, I truly appreciate you, you know, relaying this to council again, because it's got to be upfront and. And information's got to be laid in front of us, how dire things that, from the reporting standpoint, has to be. Caught up, caught up and get up to speed on them, because it's affecting the revenue at this point with the city.
So I didn't, I didn't get a chance to talk to you about this before this meeting, and you just shared with me the email that you got. Are you comfortable with that contact that you have to make then? And I, I forgot what.
Oh, I guess I didn't. I didn't realize that I'd be per se contacted, or have to do the explaining from the city's standpoint. Is that, that, is that the task?
They want to call, you know, they want to call. Amy got a letter in writing, but. At least from what I could tell from the email that you sent, they want to call and want to know, they want to talk to you.
Yeah, I, I didn't get that out of the email, but. I guess I'll, I'll do what I got to do at this point. Now, I don't know if I have the right answers at all, but. All I can say is we're trying to hire a competent person to get these tasks that are in front of us completed. You know, as quickly as possible, so.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe discussion for another time, but why don't you? I think I, you, you could use a little coaching as far as. So give me a, give me a shout, and I'll give you my two cents on, on what's involved. Again, you know, I've been in contact with the state and I knew this was coming. My concern is, if they don't see enough progress on you fixing your deficiencies that you have. My fear is, well, if you, you as council can't do it, then the state will take over and they'll come in and they'll find somebody to. To write your problems. So we got to show them some progress. And that puts pressure on Amy to at least get the bank recs up through December in a relatively short period of time.
Yeah, I guess the other issue is, first of all, our meeting next week was supposed, solely, well, supposed to discuss bringing. Another council member on, on board, which that person deserves to be mayor too, so they're going to be in the mix too. And that person would be the contact, you know, to do this. Naturally, you're not going to have the knowledge and the background of what's going on, but. That's what that person is there for also. Anything else, Dave?
Uh, yeah, you could, you could defer and, and you know, just tell them that you have somebody else coming on if you really don't want to deal with them.
Well, as you know, I'm in tax season too. I, I don't have a lot of time on my hands right now. I'd rather see it deferred until the point where I, if, if I can handle the time issue. I can, because I really can't allocate a lot of extra time myself right now. You know, doing what I'm doing right now, so. That'd be the best idea. I don't know how, if, what we have to do to accomplish that, whatever the next mayor wanted, whatever that person be to. Be right on top of this issue. You know, so that's what I prefer. I, I really don't have the time to do it.
Okay, I understand.
Sorry, anything, any other comments or questions for Dave, you guys?
No, I don't have any.
Well, I appreciate you coming in, Dave, or like I said, I, I know you're busy. This is the busy part of year for you guys and. Once again, relaying, relaying the, the facts to us, so.
Moving on to item E, clarifying election clerk.
I think that's certifying.
I'm sorry, it is.
That's all right.
I know, we're all getting tired.
I'm looking at the timer and I'm like, oh my gosh, two and a half hours.
I do know that, the reason I put this on there is there are some stacks of paper. I do believe in City Hall that need to be handled specifically by an election clerk. And I think. We just need to have it handled.
If I can speak, Larcie.
Sure.
I just, we have, we do have stuff here that needs to be handled by somebody certified. Lake and our office assistant. You know, I don't really know if she's interested in it, but if you want me to bring it up to her. I could possibly mention for her to take the QVF training. I don't know what kind of expense, if any, is involved in that. But again, she is a part-time employee and her working three days now is a lot for her. But I don't want to speak on your behalf or her behalf. I just want to throw it out there and let you know that that could be an option. To take care of some of that paperwork. I believe, you know, usually it's, it's a long process. But I believe they can do it. When I talked to the county clerk, there is a way to do it to expedite the process. And she would be eligible to do it that way. So, you know, I, I guess I just need to know if you would like me to handle it that way. Offer that to Lake and, and if she was. Going to take that on, you know, would she be okay to work more hours if she was okay with that? You know, and this is all depending on when we get a clerk in, you know, if you get a clerk in in two weeks. Obviously, you know, that, that might work itself out. But I just want it, I want council to know that even when it's not an election, election stuff happens year round. You know, somebody has to be certified to do this stuff, and that's kind of what we ran into last fall with the election. And not having a clerk certified. And there was some chaos in the city in regards to that. So just, you know, we have a year before an election, but just to put that in your ear, that there is stuff here to be processed. And taken care of, and I don't know how, or if you want to take care of that at this, at this time.
Can I make a comment here? It's not public comment time, but being in the election chair, can I, is this okay?
Yeah, go ahead, Carol.
Okay, there's election stuff that goes on all year, so it's not just when the election time comes. Because, you know, there's people that want to get on the, the, the list to have their. Ballots mailed to them all year, and there's things that come in, there's address changes and things. So we do need someone all year. The other thing is, if you hire a clerk. That has not, no background in elections, which is a possibility. We will have a problem. So if you can, if you can train someone to do this, that would be a big plus. I, I think it's a good idea, so if she wants to do it, it would be great, because, but anyway, that's my two cents.
You know, Carol. Thanks, Carol, and I, and I agree, I agree with Carol. If she's willing to do it, why not?
I think it's worth looking into. See what the expense is, if she's willing. I think having another person. With more certifications under their belt, working in the city is a bonus.
Yep, absolutely. But you know, that's going to be up to Lake, and so Amy, you know, if you want to ask her, I mean, that's, I'm, I'm all for it.
Okay, and you know, a, a factor with Lake is, you know, she's in college. Her schedule changes every semester. Sometimes she can give us, you know, very little time, sometimes she can give us a lot of time. So I'll definitely run it past her. We'll look into the process, and then I can let you guys know at next meeting.
That'd be great. Thanks, Amy.
You're welcome.
On to F, council. On to F, council meeting budget.
And this I put in there, because we are having more frequent meetings. I don't know, are we supposed to be getting paid per meeting? Personally, I myself am okay with the one meeting a month payment, so to speak. I I'm tonight, I'm here volunteering. I'm not here getting paid. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm okay with our with their, um, as you say, when we get our our check in. Is it January and June or June and December? I I'm fine with that. Any thoughts, anybody? Brian?
No, I have no thoughts at all on it, so, you know, we're not doing it for the money anyway, so.
Right. That's what I mean. Um, I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page as far.
No, I would say stick stick on our budget if it takes takes this long to straighten things out and um, you know, whatever the budget is divided by whatever four or three or we get paid every quarter, that's what you get, so.
Right.
There is, there is, in the charter, it says that um the council members.
Ten dollars per meeting.
Right.
With a maximum of two hundred and fifty dollars per year.
Covered it anyway.
So you're you're maxed out at two fifty, no matter.
Okay.
So the person that would do payroll would just need to know, you know, how to handle this.
That that compensation may have changed with that charters.
Um, it has not. It has not.
So the council, council, council rate hasn't changed?
It has not.
Charter would have to be amended.
Gotcha.
That's the charter I was given, nineteen sixty-three version.
I had I had more hair in my head than.
We'll we'll get the rest of that.
Okay.
So we're all set on that? Moving on to public comment. Anybody have anything for public comment?
Yes, I do. If I could talk, Mayor, please.
Absolutely, Marty.
Okay, uh, June first, I've been in Pinconning working retail for fifty years. In all those years, I've never worked with anybody better than Terry Spencer as a police officer. I haven't spent just hours with him. I spent weeks by his side working on cases. And I I just recently realized we have a lot of evidence that you folks are supposedly have locked up in your evidence room at City Hall. And I just wondered if any of you had been in there to look, just even last year. Uh, Terry confiscated a bunch of aerial fireworks that some people had stolen from us. And I'm just curious, uh, we had one gentleman had over two thousand dollars worth of fishing lures in a bag. And I'm just very curious whether this stuff is still in there and what happened to it and when we're gonna get it back.
I have not been back there, so I can't say that I've seen these items.
My my understanding, Marty, it's it's all sealed. Uh, Rich, could Rich could highlight that better than I can, because we we discussed this at our last meeting.
Yeah, I talked to the sheriff a week ago before our last meeting, who said that uh he and the state trooper or the police commander from the Tri-City Post had sent their evidence people up to inventory and seal the evidence locker. Amy tells me that the squad room may have had a seal on it and that seal is broken. At which point the evidence may be spoiled. I I heard that from Amy at the last meeting, and so I called the sheriff again and asked him to clarify from his evidence personnel whether they had actually sealed the squad room. Because if the squad room has been, the seal's been broken, the evidence may not be admissible because the chain of custody hasn't been maintained. And basically, uh, that was something that the state police and the sheriff's department were going to take over, maintain the evidence. And apparently, they've talked to the prosecutor about it. There are a half a dozen or a dozen files that they may finish doing the investigation and try to charge people. But a lot of the misdemeanors like probably the shopliftings that were done at your store. Um, prosecutor may not even be interested in trying to do anything with. So that evidence may be released. All of this is ten-day-old information, so the fact that you've been a year or two without any progress. I didn't even know it was not happening until the last two weeks. And so I've tried to reach out and get the other law enforcement entities to see if we can get it moved and done and processed through.
Yeah, my my understanding too is a uh Sheriff Cunningham did call me about this too, and he relayed that the the state state police actually has the authority on uh the evidence lockers in the city. They have taken over that, so questions have to be directed to the state police. He's got some contact information, Marty, so if if you want to give Mr. Cunningham a call, he could point you in the right direction too, to get you some answers on that.
Well, the big thing, but the big thing is, I you know, I'm sorry, it's your police department. You find out. My big concern is, guys, the evidence that was there that they've had for maybe three years on us. Are you sure it even exists? You might want to do a little checky.
I'm I'm not, because I have never, other than when I first went up to City Hall, become the attorney three years ago. I've never gone back into the police department. So, uh, and Sheriff Cunningham was meeting with the post commander the day I called him. And he was gonna call me back. He hasn't called back yet, so.
Because my concern is, is the evidence that Officer Spencer put there. Is it even still there or did it mysteriously disappear somehow? That's what my big concern is, guys. That's what you need to kind of dig into and see if you can prove some of the things that should be there, but where did they go if they're not there? Because the state police, the sheriff could have came up and logged all this stuff. That's fine, but what exactly did they log? Did they log fifty percent of what should have been there? I'm just concerned about that. You might want to, and and I realize this is a real mess. But uh probably Officer Spencer is the only one that could fix that problem.
I'll ask him.
Thank you.
I'll comment on that if you would like me to, Mrs. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, I would tell you, first of all, uh, and uh in commenting on Marty's statement there, um, when I came back to work in March, um, the prior city manager intentionally got rid of the other officer that we had working at the Pinconning Police Department before I got back. It bewilders me why he did that. Now, while it was mentioned that it was a financial decision. Everybody that's on this conversation right now now knows they sent a considerable amount of money back to the Pinconning High School that they already paid for the position. The question should be asked is why did they do that? When I came back to work, the city manager, and you can refer back to Dawn Holder, gave her special instructions that I wasn't to enter the police department. I wasn't to get in the car. I wasn't to go in the evidence room. And you can you can ask her about that. The question I would ask is why did he send me home every day and pay me instead of have me go there and do the job? Everybody knew they were gonna shut, he was gonna shut down the police department. Why wouldn't have he had me come in there and go through the evidence and turn the and I will go as far as to say is the thousands and thousands of dollars of evidence that we had just out of Mr. Hornacek's business alone. Uh, I worked there for thirteen years. And I'll say this because I think this is a pretty limited crowd uh that's on this that's on this call. You folks on this council need to understand the ticking time bomb that you're sitting on. The sheriff and the state police that probably came in there and probably tagged the things, just like Mr. Hornacek had indicated. They're not gonna do anything. State police is not gonna do anything. They they don't, they don't run a local jurisdiction. The sheriff will come in if you pay him. I'm certain he will. Um, but to go on Mr. Hornacek's statements, there's only two people uh in the state of Michigan or probably the world that know what's supposed to happen with that evidence. One was the former chief Tom Tober, and the other one was me. I I went through the evidence school paid for by the city of Pinconning. Um, and it's a, that's a problem. You you don't comprehend the amount of money, cash, the amount of drugs, the amount of guns, the amount of ammunition, the amount of personal property that you have sitting in a room uh not too far away from away from Amy. You have more security guarding the hot dog buns at the park than you do at your city hall. This is a subject I brought up a long time ago, uh, back in two thousand nineteen, when I talked about getting security system and camera systems there. Um, there's a lot of questions that Mr. Hornacek just mentioned that probably needs some answering. And I don't know what the solution is to that, but I will, but I will say this. And and I do appreciate uh the city working with me with my problem. The last person you had there was a failure, um, and he messed a lot of things up. And that's unfortunate for the people who live in that community, and and I and I loved working there. Um, my life has moved on now, but you really need to think about what you're gonna do with that ticking time bomb that you have in the other room. Uh, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be dealt with. It, and now that you got Tracy on there and you're gonna get some other city manager. Um, I would be willing to discuss some options that I could probably help you out with with working through that situation. But it's unfortunate that if there's one case, if there's one single case that somebody was victimized in that city, that they're just gonna brush off, that's bullshit. Uh, that's, pardon my language, that's bullcrap. Every one of them cases should have been prosecuted. I mentioned that to the past city manager. He wouldn't let me do it. He wanted me out the door and and he succeeded. And and all I'm saying is, um, if somebody from the city of Pinconning wanted to have the discussion with me uh how we could take care of that, I could probably help him out with that, but uh obviously, I have a full-time position where I'm at. Um, it it would take some time. I'm not gonna do anything for free. Um, but it's something that should be taken care of, because you got people like Mr. Hornacek that I can tell you, he had boxes and boxes and boxes and thousands of dollars of stuff that's just sitting there. How long, and I'll tell you, I know the criminal element up in that area. How long before they figure that out? It's not gonna be that long, guarantee you. So if somebody wanted to have the conversation with me.
Not if you put it on Facebook, right? If you put it on, not if you put it on Facebook, right?
What's that?
That, what are you talking about?
Put one on Facebook.
Now, you know what I'm talking about.
Well, let's move on into our meeting here. I have a couple comments. Can I?
Sure, absolutely, Carol.
Okay, the first thing is, um, I missed the second hour of your meeting, because I jumped into Northern Bay's meeting. But um, when I got back, you were talking about Zoom meetings through the month of March. And I've been kind of watching, because we have border review at City Hall on March eighth. That's Monday. Is your meeting gonna be a Zoom meeting on March eighth? Anybody? Council meeting, yes, will be a Zoom meeting, I do believe.
Meeting will be a Zoom meeting on the eighth.
Okay, great, then we're then we're good there. Um, the other thing is, Northern Bay ambulance. Um, Craig is right. I have not seen anything. I haven't been in on all your Zoom meetings last year, but I haven't seen any him reporting in the paper that who I don't even know who your representative is to Northern Bay's board, but I have not seen anything brought up. And every meeting, they talk about the fact they have no operating money and other problems. And this has not been brought back to the board. And this is going to be a problem, because now they've lost their administrator. And it's going to get contentious, because it's gonna get expensive to pay for an ambulance. So just so you're aware, that's what's going on there. That's that's it for me.
Thanks, Carol. Does anybody have anything else for public comment? I will say I I fully agree with the with Marty and Spencer, that it needs to be taken care of. I mean, if it needs to be removed, it needs to go someplace else, whatever they have to do without it sitting there, just.
I agree, something, someone needs to look into it, and I don't know if that I don't know that council can legally go in there into, I don't know.
You see, and I don't know that either. I I don't think they would be able to. I think it would have to be someone that knows, like Spencer, that knows what's back there.
And like I said, Mrs. Mayor, um, if if somebody wanted to have the conversation with with me at a different time. It's actually quite a simple fix. Um, it's a matter of if they're willing to do it, so.
Okay, great. Does anybody have anything else for public comment? All righty, moving on to twelve. Let's get out of here. Who's gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second. Do you need seconds?
So we have a motion and support to adjourn the meeting. Do we need roll call vote, please?
Laporte? Ms. Laporte?
I don't see her on here.
Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Keeny?
Yes.
Saha?
Yep.
And Mayor Proton Butcher?
Yes, and I would also like to thank everyone that joined tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
For uh bringing that to our attention. That is great to know. So everybody have a good evening.
You too. Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, bye.